please be sure to sign at the podium for to speak at open forum. So there is a blue clipboard there and you can sign up to speak there. Or if you wish to speak on an agenda item, there's a yellow clipboard and you can write down the agenda item, okay? And you need to do that before we get started. Erica to get back. Are we waiting for any? Is everyone on virtually? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fahad?
Here.
Councilman Santeen?
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Thank you. Please stand if you're able to for the invocation by Council by Councilwoman Jackie Bravo.
Dear God, as we gather here today as a one body to make decisions on behalf of our community, may you guide us in the right direction. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome everyone to our city council meeting for April twenty second. It's great to see so many faces in the audience and welcome to those that are joining us virtually. We'll get started with the awards and presentation section. Excuse me, excuse me. Our first agenda item is Miami Dade Fire Rescue Annual Report by Miami Dade Fire Chief Ray Yadalas. It's here. Hello, Chief.
I want to move that podium up a little bit, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of this great council, Mr. Manager, Assistant Manager, Madam, Ma'am, and to the residents of Miami Springs. Uh, thank you. Thank you for this honor to present the two thousand twenty-three service delivery report from Miami Dade Fire Rescue. Uh, before I I begin, I just want to identify two members of my team, Division Chief Mark Chambers, who oversees this North District, uh, including Miami Springs, and my division manager over planning that put together the presentation, Jenna Leganja, uh, two members that have been with me since I became fire chief just under two years ago. Uh, again, thank you for the opportunity to present the two thousand and twenty-three report and I think we'll begin now. So, you know, just a little bit about the Miami Dade Fire Rescue for the, you know, members of the audience in regards to what the services that we bring to Miami Springs. So Miami Dade Fire Rescue next year will be ninety years old. We are the largest fire department in the southeast of the United States. Uh, we are the sixth largest in the country. Uh, we're just over twenty-nine hundred employees with over one hundred and sixty frontline units. This includes fire trucks, rescue trucks, hazardous materials, technical rescue, you know, and all hazards agency that can mitigate, you know, uh, every emergency that can come, you know, that could be, you know, known. Um, there are seventy-one fire stations that we function out of. We have two full-time helicopters and fireboats and just recently we became ISO, ISO Class One, and we're currently accredited by the Commission on Fire Accreditation. So just a little bit on the ISO Class One, which we achieved, and I believe Madam Mary may have received a letter or an email from Merrick Cava, you know, identifying the distinct distinguished status of ISO Class One. So the ISO Class One, when it, it is one, it is a status that's extremely difficult to attain for a large metropolitan fire department. And typically because when you have areas such as the deep down south where, you know, the the county is very large and response times is a factor, hydrants, the number of fire stations that are close proximity also goes into factor. And we actually achieved the Class One. We are the largest fire department with a geographical area of over one thousand square miles with a population over one million that's actually attained that, which is extremely very difficult to attain. There's thirty-eight thousand fire departments in the country and we are one of one hundred and twenty-three, only one hundred and twenty-three departments in the entire country that has the ISO Class One and the accreditation. And just for the residents and business owners for Miami Springs, though, beginning July first is when we actually began the five-year status of ISO Class One. Uh, there is, you know, it's supposed to be an insurance savings with your insurance carriers. Now, more likely than not, you're gonna see it with the business owners rather than residences, but we definitely recommend beginning July first, uh, start making phone calls to your carrier in regards to the ISO Class One that Miami Dade Fire Rescue now holds. So this, uh, last year Miami Dade Fire Rescue placed Rescue Sixty-One, which is down in Eighth Street, uh, and Engine Seventy down south. But in addition to that, we placed two basic life support units, which are BLS units to assist with the call volume and to get our ALS units back in the service quicker. One of those units is actually running out of Model City, which is off of Two Seven Avenue and Sixty-Fourth Street Northwest. That unit actually does respond here when there is a basic life support need. And instead of calling out the rescue, if the fire truck needs a, a BLS transport, instead of calling out the rescue and losing that rescue for the area, we actually call out the BLS unit, keeping the rescue in service and quickly getting the suppression back in service. So that was placed in the service, uh, this last year. Uh, additionally, as you could see here, we hired, uh, over a hundred and thirty-eight firefighters. This current year, we're at seventy-one. We have another class of forty-two beginning in June as a result of the growth and attrition with the department. Uh, thank you. So, so a little bit of the service runs for Miami Springs. So MDFR has been serving Miami Springs since nineteen seventy-nine. So last year in Miami Springs, we ran two thousand two hundred and forty-nine calls. We had an average response time of less than seven minutes. And you could see the breakdown of the calls between life-threatening calls, non-life-threatening calls, and of course, you know, different types of fires and other emergencies. And some of those other emergencies, people will ask, you know, what does that consist of? It could be elevator emergencies. It could be, uh, consist of technical rescue and as such. So this is just a map, uh, the actual geographical location of Miami Springs. So as you could see here, and I know that it's a little bit on the, um, blurred side, but Station Thirty-Five sits in the center there. Uh, just on the south of, or just below that is Station Fifty-Nine and to the left of that is Station Seventeen. So in the second here, you can, but before I go to the next slide, you can see that there's quite a few stations around you. So you have Station Seventeen, Station Fifty-Nine, Station Forty-Eight, uh, Station Sixty-Nine, Station Forty-Six. These are all units that respond to Miami, uh, Miami Springs when there's an actual emergency. I think the misconception, you know, many people believe that when there's a structure fire, the fire truck and rescue truck from Miami Springs responds alone, and it's not the case. And as many of you may be aware, the fire that we had, I believe in January, you know, that, uh, that required, uh, in the vicinity of seven, uh, fire trucks and three medical rescues. In addition to that, uh, a a battalion unit, a couple of battalion units which assume command. And then, of course, there's the redundancy of additional resources that come and backfill behind Miami Springs. So it's not just the one station, but you could see several stations that occupy the Miami Springs area. Um, here is a breakdown of the units that tend to respond in the event that there's emergency, and that includes structure fires. So at any given point, you could easily have eighteen units, you know, in the city of Miami Springs within a few minutes. And those are the stations as you're, as you could see here, beginning with, uh, in proximity to the actual geographical location for Miami Springs. So Thirty-Five, which actually sits in Miami Springs' boundaries, Fifty-Nine, which, uh, sits on, uh, Fifty-seventh Avenue and Thirty-Sixth Street. And those two stations alone account for, I believe, just over ninety percent, which we're gonna see here in regards to the total calls that, uh, come out of Miami Springs. But you could also see that there's hazmat units, other suppressions and technical rescue units that, uh, service the Miami Springs area. So in addition to the call volumes, uh, for Miami Springs, you know, last year we inspected four hundred and eighty-five businesses in Miami Springs. And in addition to that, we can, uh, we participated in seven community events for the village or for the, for Miami Springs that touched five thousand eight hundred and sixty residents with life-saving education and resources. So what are the, some of those resources and, um, events that we're, we're participating in? So one here is, and on January thirteenth, you know, we had the Community Affairs, uh, from Miami Dade Fire Rescue attend the Seventh Annual Community Health and Wellness Fair in Miami Springs. Um, in addition to that, Miami Dade Fire Rescue participated with our newly launched program, the HELP Program, the Health Emergency Life, uh, Program, which is a hands-on training to assist with medical, uh, teaches life safety, life-saving actions to the residents and provides, uh, awareness class for stroke. This is also hands-on CPR for many of our residents. As you could see here, Miami Springs had seventy-eight members for, or seventy-eight residents that actually participated in this free program. This program, all it's required is to make contact with Miami Dade Fire Rescue's Community Affairs or our EMS division. And we come out and we host the course that's two hours long. And as you could see here, just from, from the period of last year till January, we've had seventy-eight Miami Spring residents that actually participated in the HELP Program. In addition to that, we also launched our Splash Program, which has an acronym of, uh, Safety Prevention, Learn to Swim, Awareness, Life Saving Lives, and HTO. And it's our approach to water safety, drowning prevention, and, uh, swimming education. Now, what's a little bit different with this program and we continue to, uh, implement is this is a, you know, twelve-month program where many of the different programs out there tend to harp on this, you know, the spring and the summer, and then when school starts again, everybody kind of, you know, takes a break where we have not. We continue to work with faith-based organizations, um, you know, and and other private and and public partnerships to teach the students how to swim. Uh, we, we continue to, you know, I believe we're at just under one thousand students that have been taught to swim since the implementation with, uh, different faith-based organizations, you know, how to, uh, for the community, or I'm sorry, for Miami Dade County in general. You know, just as, as important as, you know, our responses and our ability to go out and, and, you know, engage with our residents is our customer feedback survey. So this is actually sent to twenty percent of our MDFR EMS patients. So this doesn't go out to any other patients but the EMS patients. So of that twenty-eight city residents surveyed in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three actually returned, uh, the survey. And we had a rating of four point nine two out of five and with a ninety-eight percent satisfaction rate. And what you see here are just some of the quotes from actual residents from Miami Springs. So these are dedic, you know, truly residents of Miami Springs that have actually completed the survey and, you know, provided some feedback in regards to the different services that we provide, uh, our residents here. And as you could see here, I had a very good experience. Fire Rescue, all three were very professional. They had a way of calming me down. I was stressed. Congratulate them all for, congratulate them for me. Thank you again. And you could read on. There's just, you know, you know, many more that have come to us from Miami Springs. And with that, Madam Mayor is, you know, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to present the two thousand twenty-three, you know, service delivery report. And, uh, I am available for any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and and thank you to the Miami Dade, um, County Fire Department for all the years. Is it ninety years you said?
Well, so we've been ninety years in existence, and I know we've been servicing Miami Springs since nineteen seventy-nine.
Thank you very much. Um, we're very grateful for that. Are there any questions?
Chief?
Chief?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you be having an instruction on the CPR again sometime soon or?
So those are, they're set by, you know, anyone that's requesting it. So if there's, you know, someone from Miami Springs that's requesting, you know, the course, all they need to do is reach out to us and we coordinate with them. So the only thing that we ask for is an actual facility that we could bring the equipment and actually render the different, uh, types of training. And I believe that they could do ten people at a time and each course is, um, two hours long.
Amazing. And how can we, um, go about applying for the swimming program?
Uh, I could coordinate that with you. I'll give you some information and contact information. So, you know, we could get, uh, you know, how, whoever we want to get, uh, in regards to that program. If it's one, one student or several, we could get all that information for the next course.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Chief, I have a few questions. Um, as far as the Splash Program, you do that, we have a community pool.
Okay.
And we offer, and, um, and thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing that up. I wanted to ask about that. We have a community pool and we offer swim classes. How would that, how would you coordinate that with our pool or is it at a different location? How are the Splash classes?
So we would just have, we would have to coordinate offline. So because it's over a course of, I want to say, four weeks of the training and, you know, each student would have to come for all four to, and 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 the intent behind it is, you know, we're not gonna teach them to become Michael Phelps, which we all know. It's the, you know, the intent is, you know, God forbid they got pushed into a pool or they fell into a lake or canal that they know the most direct method and to remain calm, to swim to safety. So, um, in regards to the use of the community pool, I know that we're always looking for different areas. And, you know, we could just coordinate with, uh, the team and we could go down that pathway. So I would have to coordinate with our Splash Program as to how they would go about it.
And I'll ask our city manager and perhaps her, is Omar here, our recreation director, um, to reach out to you to coordinate? That would be great. And I know that's, this is something that around this time of the year I always um, mention at a city council meeting, you know, Miami Springs is a community full of, South Florida is a community full of pools, canals, lakes and oceans. And every child, I believe very strongly, every child that grows up in South Florida should learn to swim. There's no excuse for it. So, um, with your program and, and I've said this to the residents every year, um, don't let the costs keep you away. If you cannot afford the swim classes, reach out to any of us on the council and we will find a sponsor for you to, to take swim classes. It's, um, I think that that should be, uh, something that is fundamental for any child that grows up in South Florida.
Yeah, and our, our Splash Program is also free. So, you know, definitely, we're, we, we share the same vision.
Wonderful. And then I wanted to ask you, congratulations on the ISO.
Thank you.
Um, category one. Are there other fire departments that are category two and?
So there are, um,
Category one that's?
So obviously one, but it goes up as high as nine. So the nines you typically see at the, you know, the very rural volunteer fire departments, uh, typically here in South Florida, it's a one or a two.
Okay. And, um, that's, that's a big achievement. And ISO is the international standards organization, which means you're complying with standards that are beyond internationally renowned instead of just, you know, um, for our state or our, our government.
And there's so many different, you know, methods and you're right, you're absolutely right, uh, in regards to, you know, the, just the different processes, policy procedures, and, uh, I can't emphasize how much, uh, work had gone into this. But, uh, I want to say that extremely proud of this, uh, status. You know, it's extremely difficult for a large department.
And you mentioned that we could, um, we should, um, ask for an insurance savings.
Yes. Yes.
So would that be by mentioning for our city manager um to mention that our fire department has an ISO Cat One so. um classification? Is that what we ask? Is that what we ask them to look for?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So one of the things uh beginning and it be, it takes effect July first. So I know that, you know, people ask, well, how much is the savings? Each insurance carrier is different, depends on what your bundle is and everything else. I know that, you know, down south and out west, they may see a slightly more uh savings, you know, just based on, you know, what regarding the response times. So come July first, all we need to do and and we've been talking about placing the actual certificate on MDFR's webpage. So uh you could access it to show that you, you know, the department that serviced uh for Miami Springs is a Class One. And from there, they determine, you know, what the savings are. And what we believe is more of the savings will be seen towards the commercial. I just don't know what that, you know, amount is going to be. But uh we we should see a savings and more at the commercial level than the residential level.
Okay, great. And JC, if if you could coordinate with the chief to, because it's very timely because our budget process starts in August, so um.
That's that's for residents, right?
So for business, it's for business owners and and residential, yes.
And prop, our property, city property?
I don't know how it is for that. I just know that they always use the term business owners. So.
All right, wonderful.
So what I'll do is I'll reach out uh through the district manager and I'll, you know, get all the information in regards to the HELP and Splash Program. And we'll also work with uh the city manager in regards to uh the ISO certificate.
Perfect. Did you have a question?
No, you address it. Thank you.
Okay, I have one last question with our fire uh station.
Yes.
Station thirty-five. Thirty-five, that's here. How is that as far as um, you know, for us, it's really convenient. It's right next to our police station. It's part of our city hall. Um how does that compare as far as um are there any um notes you want to relay to us regarding?
So, you know, the.
Our station.
So obviously the station, as you saw on the geographical map, sits in the center. And, you know, of course you have additional stations that are on just the on the outskirts. So what we always look for in a fire station is the ability to put two trucks, a medical rescue, which is there, and a fire truck. So you have the best of both worlds going on right now. However, should there be a a possibility down the road, five, ten years, where there's massive growth in Miami Springs and, you know, there's need for additional service, uh obviously we would not be able to achieve that because the station is very limited to, you know, a total of seven firefighters. Uh right now, I I think you may have seen that the fire truck has been parking outside for a, you know, a few months. So I think the current fire truck that they had, because the truck that we purchased for Miami Springs is actually a little bit uh is not as tall as the rest of the fire trucks because of the height of the uh the station. I know the station is a much older, uh but we've done, you know, remarkable job in making sure the upkeep of the firehouse itself, uh making sure it doesn't deteriorate whatsoever. Um but right now, in regards to, you know, the capabilities, uh you are achieving what, you know, uh all the other cities are achieving and that's at least two units in your city. So.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you, everyone.
Very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Department, yes. Um I uh before we go on, I wanted to ask, and I I meant to ask at the beginning, is it okay with the council if we move agenda items twelve B and twelve E to after open forum? So that we don't have those guests waiting so long to.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll do that. All right, so um our next award in the presentation is a presentation by Caballero Fierman, Irena and Garcia LLP on our annual comprehensive financial report.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you said um items twelve A and B, correct?
Um twelve B and E, right? Let me just double check.
Is the Centennial?
Yes.
Okay, um and also Fred, um he's item A, twelve A?
Yes, yes, please. Let's do that too soon because our other ones may go a little further. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, well, good evening. Good evening, uh Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. For the record, my name is Andrew Fierman and I'm a partner with Caballero Fierman Irena Garcia, CFLG for short. And I am the partner in charge of the city's audit. Also with me tonight is the manager in charge of the city's audit, uh Elias Rodriguez. I'm here to provide a brief presentation on the um the city's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year under September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Now, the document is uh it's broken up into various sections. I'm going to point out a few things within each section and paraphrase a few things as I go through. So the four sections that the the report's broken up into is the introductory section, uh the financial section, the statistical section and the compliance section. So first item I wanted to point out is in the compliance section and it's on uh page Roman numeral six. And it's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Uh the city did receive this award for the uh ACFR for the for the fiscal year September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This one is being submitted as well for the uh for twenty twenty-three and we do expect that it will receive the award for uh for next year as well um because it meets all of the requirements. Next, moving now into the second section, which is the financial section and the first item within there, which is the Independent Auditor's Report. And that's, that has forced, that has a few different sections and again, I'm going to paraphrase a few things within each. So the first section is the opinion section. It's the most important. It talks about what we've audited as well as what our opinion is in the financial statements. And that states that we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the city of Miami Springs, Florida as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Now, that's an unmodified or a clean opinion and it's, of course, the only opinion that you want on your financial statement. So clean opinion once against this, once again this year on the city's financial statements. The next section gets into under what standards we performed our audit. And that states that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and government auditing standards. The third section talks about what management's responsibilities are for the financial statements. And that states that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And the last section I want to point out is our responsibility as auditors. And that states that our objectives are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement and to issue an auditor's report that includes our opinions. So clean opinion on the financial statements once again this year. Um the next section runs from pages four through twenty is the Management's Discussion Analysis. And if you don't read anything else in this document, you should read this because it it talks about the year, it compares current year to prior year. It talks about those changes and it's written from management's perspective. So it's like a really, really good, like executive summary of this, you know, uh hundred, hundred and twenty-five page document.
So it's on page twenty?
Page four through twenty, pages four through twenty. A lot of good information in there. Um again, it's a hundred and twenty-five page document. It's about sixteen pages and it and it tells a lot about the year and, you know, what happened. And once again, it is also written from management's perspective. And then after the Management's Discussion Analysis actually starts the financial statements. Um and that begins on page twenty-one and that runs from pages twenty-one through thirty-one. And this includes the the government-wide statement of net position um and statement of activities as well as the fund financial statements for your your governmental funds, for your enterprise funds, as well as for your pension funds. Um the one thing I want to point out within here is actually on page twenty-three. Page twenty-three is the balance sheet for your governmental funds and specifically the first column, which is your general fund. And within there, the third line from the bottom is the unassigned fund balance in your general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city. And the unassigned fund balance at September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three was approximately seven point four million um at year end. After the uh the financial statements, beginning on page thirty-two and running all the way to page seventy-seven, is the notes to the financial statements. Um this section includes um the required disclosures um that are that are required under professional standards that provide additional information on the numbers that are presented within the financial statements. So provides more detail, um narrative detail as well as numerical detail. Um and it is suggested that you do read the notes in conjunction with the financial statements because it tells the whole story. So again, a lot of good information within there as well and that that runs again from pages thirty-two through seventy-seven. That's the notes to the financial statements. Then after the notes to the financial statements, and again, we're still in the financial section, um is the required supplementary information. And this is information that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board requires to be included within the document and includes information on budgetary comparison information for the city as well as information on the pensions. The one thing I wanted to point out within here is on page seventy-eight. Page seventy-eight is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. Once again, the the main uh operating fund of the city. Um and and again, on this one page, um it has a lot of good information on on the results of the budget to actual on the general fund. Um it talks about the, it shows, the first column shows the original adopted budget. And then the second one shows the final amended budget and compares the actual results to the final amended budget. The one thing I wanted to point out here, which is the last line on page seventy-eight, is that total expenditures were approximately nineteen point five million budgeted. Um actual was eighteen point four with a uh positive variance of one point one million, so one point one million under budget overall in the in the general fund. Now, finally, I'm going to go to the fourth section of the document, which is the compliance section. And that starts on page uh one fourteen and runs to page one twenty-six. And this includes the reports that are required under uh generally accepted government auditing standards, the rules of the Auditor General of the State of Florida and the uh the Federal Single Audit Act. Um and within here, we are pleased to report that we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control, nor did our tests find any instances of non-compliance. Within our manage, within our management under course, the rules of the Auditor General, there is one matter uh for a recommendation for improvement that we did include in there and it is, it is written within the document on page one twenty-five and management has responded to that one as well. And it is related to the uh the sanitation fund revenues, uh the sanitation fund that there was, did have a uh a negative net position. Uh so we wanted to point that out within the document, have spoken to management about it and management has provided a response. Once again, that's on page one twenty-five. And then finally, with the financial statements, you will also receive a letter. Um there are certain communications that that were required to uh to communicate with you as as those charged with governance. Um within the letter, there are all standard communications, um but a couple of things that I wanted to point out is that we did not encounter any difficulties in completing and performing our audit, uh nor did we have any disagreements with management. Um it was a uh a smooth audit once again this year. You know, we come in, we ask for a lot of information, we receive that information, we process that information, we go through it. We come back, we ask for more stuff, we ask more questions and, you know, the ci- city was really up to the task of of being responsive uh quickly enough for us to be able to do what we need to do, to be able to be here tonight, to be able to, you know, provide, render our opinion and be able to uh provide this report to you. Um overall, you know, I'd just like to thank uh, you know, Chris Chioka, uh Moira Ramos, uh the rest of the city staff um for their cooperation assistance throughout the process. Um and also I'd like to thank you um as the as the governing board of the uh the governing body of the of the city for your for your trust in in my firm and my team. Um it it truly is an honor and privilege to be of service to the to the city and we thank you for that. Um with that, I'll I'll leave it there and, you know, open it up to any questions that you may have at this time. Thanks again for the opportunity to present.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the council?
Um, yes, sir. Chief, you you all have been doing this for a while with us, correct?
Yes, we have.
Well, I'm sorry. So uh budget to actual, um that looks pretty good, right? And that is that, how does that compare with the previous years? The the budget to actual totals nineteen point five, eighteen point four act- actual and point one million positive?
Yeah, one million under budget. Yeah, that's 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 very positive, yes.
And and that that's in line with how we've been doing last couple of years?
Within your general fund.
To the chair.
So good news.
Sorry, sorry, one second. Any other, anything else?
Yeah, no, and I I just wanted to, you know, I I appreciate the the observation that uh in working with the staff, uh the process, I know these processes are very, very detailed and have and I've been in positions to have to supervise getting information to folks. And and um and when the job is well done, it's a lot of work. And so I appreciate hearing that the uh the process, there were no difficulties with with the city, with the staff and it's been a smooth audit. Most people don't understand. That's music to our ears, right? When you have a smooth audit. So thank you so much for that.
Welcome.
Um I no longer have a question. I just saw here under conditions and causes because I just, I didn't know what sparked the recommendation of evaluating sanitation fund expenses, but I can see that you provided a condition and cause.
Any other questions from the council? I have a few. Um I'll start with this with um actually with what Councilwoman Bravo uh brought up. So I think this is note uh noteworthy on page one twenty-five where you're saying, and this is something that I know we're going to mention a little bit. Um we have it on the agenda for our city manager to talk about it, but I want the the residents to know um our sanitation fees. We have not been increasing our sanitation fees to keep up with the increasing cost of operating, of of doing business. And um even though our fees have increased as far as disposal and all these other um items, we haven't done that. So that's something that um uh nobody likes to to pay more for uh sanitation services, but I want to prepare our residents. This is just the reality of it. We have to um to address that and I'm glad that you mentioned that in here. The other thing, I want, on this page, on page seventy-eight, on the general fund, so the budgeted revenues versus the ac- actual revenues. Is that? This is our adopted budget, the original one. So that would be our budgeted revenues, right?
That was the, yeah, the ori- the original adopted budget, yes.
Right. And then our actual revenues, where's our budgeted revenues versus our additional? Because this is the budget itself. But do you have a page of budgeted revenues, what we expect just as revenues and then what we've actually spent as revenues?
So so that's what's, so that's what's here. So the basically the second column is the is the is the 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 final amended budget. So any any budget amendments that came in throughout the year, that would be included there. So you see the, that total was total revenues of approximately uh twenty million, about seventy-eight thousand dollars there. And then the the third column is the actual results. That's what, that's what, that's what, that's what actually, that was the actual revenues for the year.
Okay, and this is information, this information is what we supply to you and then you check, verify that, that's, okay.
Correct.
Um. Oh, I, yes, I had one other thing to ask you. As you probably know, we're do, we're preparing um an RFP committee. We've selected an RFP committee for um the audit process. So I wanted to ask you, I and I know your firm has been doing um the audit force for quite a long year, a long time. How many years? It's like.
Uh well, since I've I've been with the firm since twenty thirteen and we've been doing this since then.
So thank you so much. You've provided an excellent service and we've always been um very happy with your service, with your assistance, with your professional expertise. But um tell me as far as each year, um when you do prepare for the new audit process, is it the same? How do, how do you prepare for that internally? Is it the same team that works on each audit?
So, yeah, so basically this, this year, actually, we we actually had a partner, a partner rotation. So we did have a partner rotation. So Enrique Irena has been the the engagement partner since um since twenty-six, since about twenty sixteen, uh twenty seventeen. So we had a, we actually had a partner rotation this year. This is actually my first year being a partner on the audit since um since then. So we had the partner rotation and and Elias, the manager, this is, this is also his first year uh on the audit as well. So we have like, we do, we do partner rotation, like try to do every five to six years. In addition to that, we do have uh different individuals that come in at the at the manager and senior level as well. We do like to have some consistency. So what's really good about that is that you'll have, like, I'll I'll come in, I'll come in as a fresh set of eyes. But then, you know, eh we'll have Enrique to to go back to for any kind of historical information or anything like that, if we need to go back and ask a question or something that that's that's been, that's been happening. So you kind of, kind of from our perspective, it kind of gets, you kind of get the best of both worlds. You get a fresh set of eyes coming in, asking new questions and looking at different things. But then you also still get to keep kind of like that historical perspective. So that's kind of how we uh kind of like the same way the the public companies, they require that partner rotation. You know, they require changing firms, but they require that partner rotation. Even that's not, that's not really a requirement or a state requirement or anything like that. We like to do that um within our firm to keep it, to keep it fresh.
So if you were um going to be a new firm, say for another city and you were a new firm, how would, is, what would differ from how you service us, how you oversee, you're actually, you know, you're providing financial oversight for us? How would that differ for from? for us? How would that differ from what you do for a new city? Is that that hasn't been your client before? And I'm trying to get an idea just because we're going to going to be going through the RFP. So I'd like to get some information as to what's involved with a new firm, how that differs.
So when we when we come in, when we come in as a as a as a new firm, and say, as you said, it's a new, it's a new a new client, we come in and we have to we have to speak with the previous firm. So we have to do, we have to review the work papers of the of the of the prior auditor. So we we asked them specific inquiries about 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 their process, what they did, what they what they encountered. We review their work papers because we have to ensure that, you know, that there was an audit that was done from the previous year so that we can we can get comfortable with the fact that there was an audit that was done in the prior year. So we have that process. Then the next step was we come in. And this is something that we do every year. But as as part of as part of our process, obviously, when you're when you there's there's that learning curve, you know, in that first year or two years, there's a there's a learning curve when you're coming in, that we do have to come and get an understanding of the, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of similarities, obviously, between between the cities, but there's also a lot of a lot of differences in how things are done, and and we need to come in and get an understanding of that, get an understanding of the processes, get an understanding of the controls, walk those through. And and we walk them through. Not our our professional standards don't require that we, you know, check to see that controls are are that they're that we they, I'm sorry, they're required that we that they're properly designed and implemented. So we check, so we do walkthroughs to ensure that. So basically, tell me, tell me what you do, let me get an understanding of what you do, and then show me. So then that's 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 when we do the walkthrough. Now, the one step that doesn't get taken in a financial statement audit is is checking to see that they're effective, because that's that's doing it, that's doing tests of internal controls. So that that effectiveness, we have a choice to do that if we want to, if we want to reduce other procedures and and rely on controls. But if we're not going to rely on controls, we would not test the effectiveness. So but it is required that you come and get that understanding of controls and and walk them through. Again, let me know what you're doing, let me get an understanding of that, and then show me. And then and then from there in that first year, you know, there's there's, you know, if if we're going to be putting together, if we're going to be doing it for the first time reviewing those financial statements, there's, you know, there's more time to spend with that. So there is, there is a lot of, there is a lot of ramp up time with a with a new with a new audit client.
Mayor, by May, I just want to make mention that although they said that we have been, they have been with us for twenty or so years, that doesn't mean that they've been on the same under the same agreement. We've gone out for RFP every five years, so I just
You know, and another one's coming up. Yes, absolutely. Yes. All right. Well, thank you so much. I it's a lot of information. Yes, sir. I'm still reviewing it. We just got it at the end of last week, so I'm still reviewing it, but thank you very much. You have been with us, you know, always provide a very comprehensive report and greatly appreciated.
It's our pleasure.
Yes, sir.
In addition, I'm piggybacking on what Tammy said. You mentioned, and I think I understood this right there. There's some internal rotation process that goes on with your partners. So we may have you know, several of them, and then the next time around, you may rotate. Also, in addition to the continuous process RFP, which is our decision to make, you are also taking those checks into place as well to rotate some of the folks that your partners.
Correct. Over the years, there's 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 probably been four different partners that have been the partner in charge of of the city's audit. And there's all, yeah, there's always
Which is good for the process.
Yes.
Yes.
Speak into the mic, please.
I I was the auditor here about seven, seven years ago when I first started. So that was my first year here, and I haven't seen the city for like seven years. And I go here is because it's like completely brand new. So I I've seen this team probably rotate about three times. So there's like, it's kind of a learning curve every time that happens as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Really quick. The document says draft, so this can still be amended after today's meeting, because I know that there's maybe some factors that are not part of this report. But you can circle back with J C and our finance director to talk about some items.
Okay, we'll circle back.
Yes, and like I said, I'm still reviewing it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We greatly appreciate your firm and and all the hard work you do for us.
It's our pleasure. Thank you all as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to announcing the City Hall Lobby Artist of the Month for April twenty twenty four, and it's students from Isaac Academy. And are they here? Come on up. Hello, welcome.
Hey.
Mike, introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening, Ms. Mayor and all the council members. My name is David Del Cristo. I'm the art teacher at Isaac Academy. We're a kindergarten through fifth grade school. And these are just some of my many very talented students that I have at that school. I'm very blessed. And they just have a short little thing to say. You guys can check out their art that's going to be hanging in City Hall for the rest of the month of April. So they're very excited. I'm very honored to not just have them in my class, but also the opportunity to present them to pretty the whole city. And we have some Miami Springs residents here in the crowd. They're going to take turns just speaking into the mic.
We might have to lower the mic a little bit for them.
My name is Nicholas Rodriguez, and I'm in the fourth grade at Isaac Academy. My art piece is a repeated image of a compass star done in the style of pop art.
My name is Adam Iglesias, and I am in third grade at Isaac Academy. My art piece was painted in the pointillism style. I used Q-tips and different colors of paint to make small dots and create an image of a parrot.
My name is Sophia Rodriguez, and I am in second grade at Isaac Academy. My piece was painted in the impressionist style. I used paint and paintbrushes to paint the landscape of the lake behind my farm.
My name is Antonella Sabett, and I'm in second grade at Isaac Academy. My art piece was painted and abstracted style. I used paintbrushes and paint to make my abstracted piece.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the recognition and the opportunity to present. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and we would like to take a photo with them. And students, artists, I on behalf of of the council and all of our residents in Miami Springs, we want to thank you for beautifying City Hall for the month of April. It's a very attractive display, and I encourage everyone as you leave, if you haven't already seen their beautiful artwork, be sure to see the work of these talented artists. Okay, and now we'd like to recognize the STEAM winner from Miami Springs Elementary, first grader Ashley Hernandez. Is Ashley here? Come on up. We are really excited. This is a a really big accomplishment, and she is the Miami Dade County winner, and I'll let you explain what you did with the poster. It's a poster, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, she won first place out of Oladade County, out of three thousand, over three thousand other participants. And she won first place. She got to meet Mayor Daniela Levine-Cavo and took took your pictures with them. She was recognized. This was for our STEAM project, Every Drop Counts Water Poster Contest. And this is what she produced right here. This is her drawing.
We have a lot of talent in Miami Springs. For such a small community, it's amazing. The the talented students and residents, adult residents too, that we have.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I was floored by this, by these, by these young people. I was listening carefully to the description of the different techniques that they use in the art. I mean, talk about impression. I don't know that I knew what that was in the fourth grade or third grade, but it's pretty impressive. And then our student from Miami Springs Elementary, my son's alma mater, winning countywide recognition. Nothing short of amazing.
Absolutely. And even the the one downstairs, when he said it's pop art, that's an interpretation of pop art, and it just looks like something out of Andy Warhol. So it's really pretty amazing. Okay, yes, sir.
Twelve A and E, I think you wanted to get
Okay. We don't have anyone signed up for open forum? Okay, is there anyone virtually signed up for open forum? No one? Okay. All right. So then we'll move to item twelve A, which is, we're moving that one up, and it's is Fred here? Hi, Fred. Fred Gonzalez is the Miami Springs Little League president, and he is also Chair of our Miami Springs Recreation Board.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you for having me. I'm here today to share with you an opportunity that has come to Miami Springs Little League at Prince Field. Douglas Orr Plumbing plans to donate fifteen thousand dollars to Miami Springs Little League to help us turn the old existing batting cage into a hit down station where multiple boys and girls can have batting lessons at the same time as they hit off tees or from their coaches. There'd also be enough room to create a space for pitching lessons for beginners in that same area. I'm here asking counsel if we could provide signage at the hit down station recognizing Douglas Orr Plumbing for their contribution. So the sign would say something like the Miami Springs Little League Hit Zone powered by Douglas Orr Plumbing. I understand that Prince Field will now also bear the Douglas Orr name, which was recently decided, but this would be a great way to recognize Douglas Orr inside the park as well with a specific area. So that's my request and my question, and I'd love to know how we feel.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I I think that it's only right to recognize Doug Orr Plumbing for this most recent this most recent and generous donation to Little League. I I would I would welcome the signage and and what it that donation is going to be able to provide for for Fred and the Little League.
Is that a motion?
Do we need a motion or just consensus on this, Heidi? Okay, do I have, is there?
I'll second it.
Yeah, a motion to approve the signage for Doug Orr Plumbing.
Hitting zone.
At the batting cage.
At the batting cages.
As written or similar to
As written here in twelve A. Motion to approve twelve A and the signage related to the donation by Doug Orr Plumbing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahut?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vasco?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, and Fred, thank you on behalf of all of us for all you do for Little League, you and all the other parents and coaches and referees and
We hope to be back soon.
Families and and also
Celebrations and honors.
For the recreation board, all the work, the great work that you do. Thank you. Okay, we move to item twelve B. And that's an update by our city planner Sylvia.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm gonna share my screen if I can. You have, I think in your package, but in any case, it was shared separately, an updated schedule for the what we now call the Southeast Springs Activation Process. And I wanted to give you this update because I know that we have been talking and been concerned about, you know, I don't want to call them distractions because all of the things that we're doing is are important. But the multiple priorities, let's put it that way. And the impact that that could have on on our schedule. And so I I went back and I looked at, this is actually the original schedule that I presented to you, and sort of reassessed a few things and updated it. Let me kind of go back. So this is, this is actually the updated schedule now. And what you can see is that we are landing approximately at the same time that we committed to previously, which is about the last week of September. I think we had like the second meet, the first meeting of September. Now we're going to the second meeting. But all the other tasks have been reevaluated. Some of them have been compressed a little bit. Some of them have stayed the same. And the the advantage we had was that in the original schedule, we had your recess estimated, you know, July, August, and so we had a gap there where we were in in the original, we were sort of in a holding pattern until we come, we could come back. And now what we're going to do is we're going to utilize that time to do more work in the background, and then when we come back, we will hold the meeting. So, you know, we are utilizing the time differently. And we're going to hopefully land and at the same sort of conclusion time that we had originally estimated. So I wanted to give you this update. I also wanted to tell you that we are in the process of setting up where I'm calling the initial stakeholder meetings, which are scheduled to happen early next week at the Curtis Mansion, and there will be an invitation going out tomorrow. This will be the first of several engagement opportunities. So I don't want anybody to think that they're being left out. This is a little bit more targeted because we want to sit down in a smaller setting, more informal setting with the property owners, the business owners, the business operators that live in those spaces and talk to them about the problems that they see from their experience, their perception of the opportunities. And then we will go out to the larger community. We are simultaneously working on our analysis. We have a series of maps, and we're putting together a report that will be part of our presentation when we go out to the larger public, which we expect will be probably at the end. Right now I have it towards the end of May. But latest, it will be the beginning of June. So that's kind of the update for the time being, and, you know, we're just moving forward.
Thank you, Sylvia, for all the work you're doing. Do we have any questions in the council? Yes, sir.
Yes. Sylvia, what is, when you you mentioned this, this early next week, several engagements with a number of business owners
Yes.
from Southeast Springs?
Yes.
I like that better than neighborhood track. Ballpark, how many are we talking about?
Well, we are inviting everybody. Yes, everybody that we have a contact for. The city has been helping us to put together a database of every single property owner, every single every single active business tax receipt.
Understood.
So we have been taking all of that contact information and we're going to use it to invite everybody. We have different time slots. We're going to have these meetings all day on Monday, half day on Tuesday, on, on the hour, forty-five minutes at a time. And we're giving people the choice of when to come. We're going to try to distribute it so that we don't have, you know, overly large groups who would like to keep it. We don't think that we're going to have three hundred people show up. I hope not, because that's not what we're preparing for. But, you know, we would like to have groups that are perhaps no more than twelve, fifteen people at a time. So that's kind of what we're planning for right now.
So what is the target audience? What's the, how many, how many are we talking about?
I'm not necessarily looking for numbers at this point. We want everybody to begin to become aware that we're doing this. That's a really important part of our, our initial task. But these meetings in particular are going to be focused on listening. So, you know, we're, you know, we're going to hope that as many of these individuals show up. I think that we're going to hear very similar things from all of them. And so I'm not so focused on a percentage or a number. We will, you know, we'll continue to make an effort to reach them if they don't all show up at this time and to bring them in, you know, to the next engagement, which is going to be a much larger opportunity. And, and so that's kind of how we're looking at it.
Thank you.
Any, anything else?
Sylvia, how are we reaching out to these? Is it by mail, by email?
Both.
Okay.
And if we need to, we're going to do phone calls as well.
Okay, yes, I was going to suggest because by mail very often, it takes quite a while by the time we get it, you know, through the process of the postage paid by the city.
We may need to actually go and drop these off, you know, they're like little pamphlets. So, you know, we'll, we'll do everything we can. We know it's a little bit short notice, but it took a while to sort of get the database put together and confirm that everything is, you know, accurate. And, and so, you know, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, no, and scheduling these meetings, you know, it's, it's tricky because if you schedule it too far ahead of time, people forget.
Yes.
So I know for me, very often, short notice works best because I know,
Yes.
you know, what my schedule is this week, you know, and, or early next week, so.
Right, so.
I'm glad we're reaching by several means and not just.
Yeah, and by, by the time we get to that point, we also, at least I'm anticipating that we'll have at least our in-progress project website up so that we can direct people there for information as well. You know, it's, it's going to be, you know, some parts of it are going to be under construction, but, you know, we'll keep adding information and we'll have a QR code available for people to access it. So that's the other thing that is happening.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update Sylvia and for all the work you and your firm are doing for us as planners. You're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia.
Okay, we'll go to item twelve E, which is a request by Councilman Santin.
Yeah, I have a request to consider and approve Miami Springs Centennial First Event on November, actually, should be a correction, there's November second, twenty twenty-four, and the Glenn Curtis Vintage Motorcycle and Car Show. And after brainstorming some ideas, we thought this event in particular was a good fit considering the history that we have with Glenn Curtis and the motorcycles. And then also that has never been done in Miami Dade County. So that was also a good viewpoint to have a conversation about. But Julie, if you want to say something in particular about it?
So the Centennial Committee has.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you're the Chair of the Centennial.
Yes, I am the Chair of the Centennial Committee. My name is Julie Arias, One to Nine Flagler Drive. So the Centennial Committee has thought of different ways that would be effective and starting to create notoriety about the Centennial Celebration coming up. People are just starting to understand that not only is it going to be our one hundredth birthday, but that there is actually a committee out there and that there are ideas and plans being done in order to do that. And one of the best ways that we thought that we could do it, of course, is by celebrating, you know, Glenn Curtis and whatnot. And we all know what an amazing cyclist he was. And we thought of Motorcycle Show. And through connections with the help of Councilman Santin and whatnot, we were able to connect with Philip, who is a part of the AMCA, which stands for the Antique Motorcycle Club of America. And so he specializes in being able to gather different types of motorcycles, antiques, as well as modern, but really create quite the experience. And we think it's something that would be great to really kick off the first initial Centennial Committee Event and, you know, start moving forward with the celebrations from then on.
Would you like to talk a little bit?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. So my name is Philip Gonzalez and I had been, my partner and I, Sidney Valen, who is traveling, wasn't able to make it today. We've been hosting the Palm Beach Concorde in West Palm Beach for the last five years. The next show would be December eighth. We've also been hosting the Wheels Across the Pond Show in Jupiter, Florida. This is our seventeenth annual, we just had our sixteenth annual, March thirtieth, just a couple of weeks ago. So we have a lot of experience putting these shows together. And for the past couple of years, I've been searching for a venue in Miami Dade County. And I, I met Councilman Santin and, and I said, what a great place to do the show in Miami Springs. So Sidney Valen, he, he is responsible for the car portion of the show and I handle the motorcycle portion for the show. I am the AMCA, I should mention, I am the AMCA Vice President for the Miami Chubb.
Okay, thank you so much. So what we're asking is for approval to proceed with planning for this event to take place November second of twenty twenty-three at the Circle, in the Circle area.
Now, let me ask you, excuse me, twenty-four. Have historically had a car show in December related to the Circle at the gazebo or something. So I think that's, you know, one, and then November and then December. So what are, have you taken that into consideration?
We have, we have. So one of the things that we've also discussed about is obviously proceeding and moving forward. This does have the difference that it also includes motorcycles. So yes, it can obviously have that effect, but we have spoken with Jaime, who is actually one of the, you know, main people that helps make that event happen. And he's actually quite supportive of this idea as well and possibly transitioning it. So in the future, this can actually be done in collaboration with the Miami Springs Historical Society, bringing in the concept of antique motorcycles as well.
Well.
Mayor, what I was discussing with, with Councilman Santin, because I brought up the same thing. I'm like, hey, we have, in December, we have a car show. In July, we have another car show. And then the Historical Society somewhere in the middle there does a third car show. So we're going to add a fourth car show, might be a lot. Especially one in November and a, and a circle closing and one in December with another circle closing. Combine that with Halloween and a, and a circle closing for Santa Claus in, in December. You can see where I'm going with this. So my suggestion was instead of doing the December one, just make it the November one. We won't do the December car show and then we'll continue normal in July.
And my concern is the circle closing because we hear from businesses, whenever we close the circle, it impacts them. You know, it changes their accessibility, it changes their business. So any event that we have at the Circle is really important. As much fun as it is for us, you know, it's very important that we take care of and consider our businesses. I'm just throwing this out there because we're already closing the Circle for the Christmas event. Would it be possible to have your event during that time?
What is the date of?
So that we're not closing the Circle again in November. What, whenever we do Christmas at the Circle, which is not, it's probably like the first or second weekend?
In Palm Beach.
Through the chair, through the chair, Omar?
Actually, Mayor, Mayor, to my knowledge, because I asked the question of when it was going to be, and they can't do it in December, this group cannot do it in December. November's the, the opening that happened because they are going to be in Palm Beach doing another show in that.
And we're talking about one night, a Saturday?
Right.
Okay, is it possible? And again, my concern, I'm thrilled to have the show. I think it's, you know, the motorcycles and everything, but my concern is, you know, responsibility to our businesses. We do have a lot of events during that time. And one more Saturday night, which is very often one of their big nights.
During the day.
And I'll let Councilman, I'll recognize Councilman Fahad in just a moment, but is it possible to hold it, say, on Curtis Parkway? You know, something where we're not closing the Circle, still having the same, all along Curtis Parkway? Can drive, you know, walk through, it's, it's very attractive, it has high visibility, but we're not closing the Circle in November and, and then again in December after we've just closed it and at the end of October for Halloween. Yes, sir.
I would, I appreciate you bringing that up. And I think also there, there's the cost involved with closing down the Circle, right? I mean, that's something that, you know, the Public Works and Police, that it's not that easy to do. I mean, obviously, we do it all the time, but there is a cost involved. But my concern was kind of what, what J C alluded to, that if we, if we're, if we're going to have so many car shows back to back, I feel like the redundancy of it didn't, you know, doesn't warrant closing it. But if we're going to bump Jumping Jacks, the December show, then I feel like it's a wash, right? Because we already had planned to shut down the Circle for a Jumping Jack Productions car show in December. So if we're not going to do that one and he, and Jumping Jacks is still going to do the one that's in June or July, then I feel like it's, it's a wash and in which case it wouldn't be an additional closer.
Correct.
Okay, and maybe a misunderstanding, when we have the Jumping Jack, aren't we closing down the Circle for the Christmas in, at the Circle?
No, no, it's two separate events.
Oh, okay, I thought they were same night.
No, no, it's two separate events and they're kind of really close together. So we're just not doing that one car show.
Okay, I, I thought we were already closing it for one and the car show was during that. So I see what you're saying. It would be a different event.
I would be in favor of doing it and bringing in, and listen, we love the car show that Jumping Jack Productions helps us with, but I think that this is an opportunity to, I mean, it's, it's different because it also has the antique motorcycle and motorcycle portion of it. And, and this is a show that's coming from, you know, that, that doesn't really, you know, this is going to be their opportunity to come down here into the Miami area. I think it's a good opportunity to bring people that don't normally come to these shows into our city. So I would be in favor of doing it, so long as it's not an additional one. It would be in lieu of the Jumping Jacks show in December. And if that's the case, I would be a favor.
Through, through the chair, two questions. You said the hours we're going to be during the day?
It's ten, ten.
And here, Councilwoman.
Ten to four, Councilwoman.
From ten AM to four PM during.
Ten AM to four PM? Okay, is the, is the, I guess this is free to the public to, to go?
Correct.
Is that a Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday, November second is a Saturday. There's, there's no way to do it in the evening, that, that, that's kind of, that's not feasible?
We start our events early in the morning. We start loading, bringing the cars and the bikes in around seven AM. It opens to the public at ten AM, judging is at one, one PM. And we're all, we're all done by four PM.
They've got experience doing.
Let's, and, and, okay, also with, if we're not closing down the Circle, you know, we're switching from one to the other, probably actually it'd be better not to have two events in December. But if you could look at the possibility of Curtis Parkway, it's just, it, it gives you a lot of, and, and the nice thing about that too, it's, it's not something just at the Circle, you know, it's not another car show at the Circle, it's a car show because it's different. So if it's possible, perhaps look at that as a possibility. You know, it has a lot of visibility.
Yes, sir.
The highlight to this show as well is that thanks to the relationship with the museum in Hammondport of Glenn Curtis and the contacts that he has, they provided, we're going to be able to bring as an exhibit the actual motorcycle that he broke the world record in nineteen oh seven to exhibit to everybody in this community and other communities on that date. So.
Correction, he set at land speed record.
Land speed, right.
Nineteen oh seven.
Sorry.
Hundred and thirty-six miles an hour.
Correct, in Ormond Beach.
When cars would max fifteen miles an hour on skinny bicycle tires.
So they've, they've already, they're willing to bring it as an exhibit and hopefully continue on to all the way to the Centennial.
That's really exciting.
It is exciting.
It's a great way, like you said, Julie, to start off, to kick off our Centennial celebrations.
Through the, through the chair, question, how many cars are we talking about roughly between cars and bikes?
Approximately, I would say about a hundred vehicles, a hundred to a hundred and fifty vehicles.
Okay.
Fifty motorcycles, a hundred cars, something like that.
The Curtis Mansion, I mean, I don't know, it's a lot of cars, but it would have been a beautiful.
They just had the car shows there.
Yeah, but this would be bringing items that historically that Glenn Curtis
Correct.
has created and is part of its history. So as homage on his property, it would have been something nice.
No, just explore because it is, you know, for our business owners, it is really hard.
Mayor, I understand your concern about the business owners. However, my plan is to include the restaurants and get them involved, the restaurant. I, I am a business owner as well. And I would approach the restaurants in that area and encourage them to pull a permit to bring their tables out, bring, you know, their servers out and, and be a part of the show.
That's a great idea.
They've done this, like in the town of Palm Beach, believe me, that we talk about fuzzy residents, to say the least. And they've done the same thing, you know, they, all the business owners have participated in this. It's, you know, it's a different spectator, sport or show. And so many of them probably don't want to go through a food truck. And so they're going to be looking for type of businesses that we have to offer as an option. So that's looking, you know, that's one other thing that we've considered. But I think the mansion, Julie has talked to Phil and there's possibility maybe, you know, of doing some silent auction stuff because we're talking about another higher end stuff. Unfortunately, it's not, she at this moment has already an event for that date. So the future events she can block off and they decide to use it as well, so.
Councilman.
And I would also have, my mic was off. I, I would also add that a lot of the ideas that have come up, that have come from the Centennial Committee involve a great deal of logistical planning on, on our part because we're kind of coming up, we're doing something that's never been done before. So I, I kind of welcome the aspect of this event that this is a group that's been doing this, that's coming. And all we really need to do is, you know, provide just the, the venue. And, and basically they, they do it. So I, I think that this is the right type of event to do because it, it involves less logistical planning, which is also a cost to the city.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I support the idea, I like the idea from the moment I heard about it. I think that if we can work out the, we can work out the, the details, and I think we can. I really love the idea.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To have this event?
To have this event, yes.
Your, your item.
Second, you want me to make the first motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Miami Springs Centennial's First Event, November second, twenty twenty-four, the Glenn Curtis Vintage Motorcycle and Car Show.
Second.
I'd just like to add on there that we're not saying necessarily at the Circle, we'll leave it up to J C. I mean, we're all in agreement that the Circle will be fine, but they're also explore other possibilities, so, all right.
Through the chair, are we eliminating one of the car shows?
Yes, the one in December.
Yes, the December show.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion?
Nope.
Call the vote, please.
It's Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
No.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say, I saw the letter here, the sponsorship letter. So we're already sending those out to sponsors for the Centennial Committee, that's great. I see it in our package with the different levels, Lady M sponsor, Platinum sponsor, Gold sponsor, Silver sponsor and Bronze sponsors.
Through the chair.
Wonderful, yes, sir.
Since Julie is here right now.
Yes, yes.
How did it go at the festival? I stopped by the table and sat down with Captain Nihal, it's always a thrill, and Kathy Doyle, but I wanted to, generally speaking.
Perception, there was, there was a lot of people that did stop by the actual booth, a lot of people that did already do verbal promises, people that signed up to be sponsors, you know, once. be, um, sponsors, you know, once everything is, is, you know, at the moment, everything officially set up, where I just found out we could. So, um, yeah, so we had a good, a good, uh, it was received quite well.
And people threw in some change.
Julie, on behalf of all of us in our residents and community, thank you for all the work you and your Centennial Committee are doing. These are volunteers who are meeting, um, frequently, coming up with, doing a lot of work behind the scenes, um, for, uh, to prepare for our Centennial Celebration for our city, which is 2026. So thank you so much. And Phillip, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to give the, he has some goodie bags there from Palm Beach Concurse.
Who are participating, bringing their vehicles for display that you give them. Oh, wonderful. Okay.
Thank you.
Let me, you know, I should put him in the mic because if not.
Oh, yeah. So we will do the same thing for, for this show here in Miami Springs. We'll set up these bags, the goodie bags with the T-shirts and all the sponsors and, and the magazine. And I, I hope to include all the restaurants in the, in the area and in our magazine as well.
That'll be wonderful. Thank you. It was, I thought for River Cities, it was really nice, um, how some of the restaurants had made their, um, dining rooms outdoors and hopefully they'll do that for this. It'll really nicely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we move to, um, we have a, uh, approval of the, yes, approval of the minutes for the March 20th workshop and the April 8th regular meeting.
Motion to approve six A and B.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahed?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo? Yes. Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight A, a public hearing. Um, Heidi, I'll let you or J C read the resolution and then we'll open it up for a public hearing.
Open forum, I think you forgot.
No, we don't have anyone signed up.
This is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving a final plat application by Enclave at Miami Springs LLC for property located at 1101 Ren Avenue, Folio number 0530240170010, providing for conditions, providing for violations, providing for authorization, providing for recording and providing for an effective date. Uh, Mayor, I don't know if our city planner has a presentation on this, but this is a fair, or the applicant and his counsel, uh, the top designers are here. This is a straightforward application, um, that you may recall hearing the tentative plat application on about a year or so ago. The plat has made its way through the process. Uh, first it came to you all, you approved the tentative plat, it then went to the county and now it's back to you for approval. Once you approve it, assuming you approve it, it will go back to the county for final approval and recording. Um, as part of this application, you also have an agreement for some improvements. That is also, uh, one of the requirements for this plat. Um, and to the extent there are any questions, um, our city planner and the applicant's counsel are here.
All right. Thank you. Let me open it up for public hearing first. Open the public hearing. Does anyone want to speak? Even if you're not signed up, if you'd like to come up and speak? Anyone virtually? I'll close the public hearing. Okay.
Um, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, it, it seems from looking at the notes, uh, and also from our briefing that, uh, it was the city's recommendation, uh, that the final plat, uh, uh, approval, uh, be granted, uh, it, uh, some conditions that are listed, there are 11 conditions that are listed, uh, and as long as the city, uh, is going to ensure those, I, uh, I would motion that we approve, uh, eight A.
Second.
And to be clear, um, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, Ms. Fargas reminded me that the plat, the final plat that's attached has been updated with the final remarks from the city surveyor. Um, so that will be updated in case anyone is watching very closely at what the exhibit is. Um, so is there anything else? No?
Through the chair.
Um, okay, we have a motion and a second. So discussion. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I see here, I don't know if maybe council wants to come up or.
Good evening. Melissa Tapinas with Law Office at 200 South Biscayne Boulevard in Miami. I'm here representing Enclave at Miami Springs LLC.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you.
Um, it was mentioned here in the analysis that they are providing for a five foot wide sidewalks, um, which will be dedicated to the city on the north and south ends of the parcel, which obviously would be good because we need continuation because on one side we do have sidewalks. And then obviously on the other, on left, wait, east, north and west, they don't have. So they would be doing north and south, wait, north and south ends. So the five foot sidewalks, I didn't, I failed to, to check with zoning if the five foot sidewalk is standard or what's the standard width of the sidewalk. Um, sorry, Sylvia.
Uh, yes, this, um, um, this plat was reviewed by Pollock Works and they have accepted the sidewalks, um, as well as the other improvements. Um, and my understanding is that they comply with the standard.
So the standard is five feet wide?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. That's all I wanted to know. And then, um, the protected trees, as you know, I'm working, I finalized a tree ordinance, which would be coming before us in the month of May, next month. And I did, um, have an exchange of words that I want to protect these trees. And if there cannot, if they cannot be protected because of the project, that this project will be subject to the new ordinances in place. I don't know if, um, we're able to create some verbiage in there. I'm on for the project. They're well within the right to, to build here, but.
The, the package had already been distributed and it, it was not updated, but I have made note of your comment. And if you add it into your motion, we will make sure that it is reflected.
Okay, perfect.
No, there's, there's no tree permit that has been approved at this point. So, you know, it, it will be subject to whatever is in place when the permits are submitted.
Okay.
So we can, we can include that language in the, in the resolution to make sure that, that it's clear that.
So my concern, my concern was with the turnaround of the county, if it comes back to us quicker than we execute our new ordinance, um, I want to make sure that they understand that there may be some sort of hold until the reading is finalized or is there a way to navigate through those waters to make sure that they comply with the ordinance that we're trying to execute shortly?
Yeah. Um, I, I did relay your question to, um, to Melissa through Robert and they have their contractor here who has given a timeline. I believe that we have actually, um, more than adequate time.
Okay.
Uh, but if you want them to explain to you what the timeframe is, he can.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So we haven't submitted for permit yet. We're working, once this is approved, um, and it goes to Miami Dade County, we'll be working on the construction drawings. Then what we'll submit for building permit and as part of that permitting process, that's when we would be subject to the regulations in place, including your new tree ordinance. So it's our anticipation that we will be in, in compliance with that new ordinance.
Perfect. I do want to be clear and fair to them so that they know coming into the project that there is something in the works.
Absolutely. We appreciate that.
Councilwoman, do you want to ask the vice mayor to amend his ordinance to include, what is the wording, um, uh, that?
Subject to a new ordinance.
Subject to a tree ordinance, the new tree ordinance.
Any tree permit applications will be subject to the, uh, city's code at that time, at the time of permit submission.
Well, at the time, it may not be ready. Right. So.
We'll make that condition.
But it may not be ready. So we have to say that the city is, uh, we have to acknowledge that the city is in the process of revising the tree code and that.
My suggestion would be that we amend condition, um, three or four to indicate because we have a reference to the sections that are, uh, applicable, which are in that chapter. And what we can say is section X as amended.
Okay. How's that? That should suffice the.
All right. So you're, you're saying section three, uh, condition four?
Yeah, there's three.
Right.
A tree removal permit.
Right. So we'll just put section 54 dash oh three as maybe amended.
Vice Mayor, okay, with that, with updating your, um, motion for that to include that.
I feel like that would be the case whether we say it or not, but we'll say it.
Now, second.
Happy to say it.
I'll say it again.
Um. We appreciate the notice. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a different kind of question. I know. I know this is, although it doesn't seem that way, but it is more at the beginning of the process. And my understanding is, and knowing that property, visiting there, the Optimus Club for years and with the Boy Scouts, I'm very familiar with that plot and driving to and for and so forth. Um, and, and, um, my understanding is that, uh, you all want to build four properties of two stories. Is that the general consensus on that? And, uh, I know you can't really answer this question, but I'd like to know, how long are we talking about? How long, how long are you guys projecting it's going to take?
Oh, we anticipate.
Providing all these things, right?
We anticipate construction will take about 14 months.
14 months.
14 months, correct.
All right.
So it's permitting. So we would anticipate two, two and a half years.
My, my, my second question will.
I can tell you there, it's, the homes are in very high demand. We, I, even my law office is getting phone calls.
No kidding. Um, my second question, and this is not for you to answer, but just a concern, when we get a lot closer to, to the construction phase is, uh, you know, provisions for the streets, provisions for the neighbors. Um, it is a, an interesting block in the sense that Hammond is, you know, it breaks right there and it goes up and down and, and, and you have neighbors all around that quadrant. Um, uh, I live on De Leon and, and South Royal Point Cian. Over the last two years, six new homes have been built or expanded. And, you know, it was, it was fine. Uh, I don't, I didn't see any problems with transportation on North Royal, but this is a little more complicated, the way, the way the, the square is configured and, uh, north and, and, and south, uh, crossing of Hammond. So just something I have on my mind.
We'll definitely be working with the city administration on our maintenance of traffic operations plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? I have a few. Um, with the alley width, the alley width is, um, that's planned here is the same alley width that we have throughout the city?
Yes, 16 feet.
Okay. And right now we're having problems with that, obviously, because our city is going to be a hundred years old. So our alleys were, uh, made at 16 feet and, um.
Is that what other alleys are?
I don't know what other alleys are.
Is that Sylvia?
A lot of them are 10 feet.
Because I'm wondering if, if now there's a standard, you know, requirement or, you know, standard for what alley widths should be, that might be different from what our original alleys are. This is a good opportunity to, um, and as we anticipate, who knows what the future will bring, but I think, um, we should consider requiring whatever is a standard alley width for this so that, um.
What I can see by the final plat is that on both sides, the plats are also 16 feet. And that's what we've proposed here. That's in the code, in your code requirement.
Okay.
I think the important part is for it to be a one-way alley. Um, and that's obviously more than enough space for one way as well as loading.
But is that the same alley width? Tammy, do you know right now?
Our typical alleys are, yes, 16 feet in width. Um, but in this particular case, there's no turns or radiuses that they have to. So it's a straight shot. So it makes it much easier to get through, um, an alley like this that's 16 foot versus one that you have to make turns and.
Right. And the goal is for it to be a one-way alley.
Okay. And then the other thing with that in mind, um, is do, can we put in a provision that the homeowners don't plant trees? Um, it'll be on their property line, but they don't plant trees so that, and no one loves trees more than I do, but they have to be planted so that, again, we're not having these problems with the alleys, you know, when they start growing, um, a certain distance from the alley. Do we have any provision for that? If you're going to plant a tree? Right now we have a lot of, one of the problems that we have with our alleys, with the garbage collection is, um, people have planted trees in the alley itself, even not necessarily.
So that's prohibited? This is a public alley? It's prohibited and there's?
No, I know in the alley itself, but I'm saying a distance from this setback from the alley itself so that in 10, 15 years, that tree's not causing.
Right. I mean, um, I think those, all of those issues will be taken care of through the permitted, the permit process. Uh, we will be looking at those issues, um, you know, against the standards that are in the code. So we would take care of that. If you wish to include language, of course we can, but certainly those details would be addressed.
Perhaps we can wait till we have this coming through and, and have that in there. I think, you know, anytime we're making something new, it's an opportunity to correct the, the problems that we're having now and start with, you know, um, on a new path. And I know we'll never fix all the alleys in Miami Springs, but, um, obviously that's something that, um, we need to look at to make sure whenever possible, we're not causing more problems.
Yeah, it suggests the type of trees that you would allow along the property lines of letting you out, as well as sidewalks is very important as it relates to roots and how they interface with your sidewalks.
So perhaps.
Well, even though right now in our ordinance, like she said, it's a public right of way. So by default, nobody would be able to, um, do any plantings or excavating or anything of that sort. So.
Not in the alleyway. I mean, close enough that it's obstructing the trucks going by.
We have a point, Mayor. We have people that have hedges, but there's a, a code that requires for the owner to maintain their hedges back. So if the trucks are coming and those hedges are infringing on the, on that, uh, driveway, then we, we have to code compliance.
But the, the, even the, and I want to stress this point because it is a big problem right now. I mean, it's, it's been an ongoing problem. It just crops up every so often is that our trucks, um, have to be special made to mat, to, um, to get through the alleys that we have. Um, so whenever possible, if we're creating new alleys, I'd like to alleviate that problem and not continue it. Yes, sir.
I, I, I think that, that we, I'm, I'm glad that you're bringing up these points. And I think that we should consider as part of code revision, uh, to address these kinds of things. But I, I, I don't think that we should be bringing it up as a condition of the approval of this plat. I think that, that's something that we should take care of in revision of, of the code. But I think, I think the thing, and I think that some of the codes just need to be enforced, like I, I just heard, uh, uh, Councilman Santeen say. So I think that they're, they're, they're good points that we're bringing up. And I think that there are things that we need to explore further. And I know, I know it's my understanding that, uh, Councilwoman Bravo is, is already working on, on some revisions and, and I look forward to those. But I, I think that we, we have a, a, a motion second that we should, uh, vote up and down on without conditions that, that kind of single things out that are more kind of like, uh, ordinance revision.
And I have another question. Um, in the past, we, um, we passed something saying that certain fees would be passed on to the developer. And I'm wanting to make sure that if there were any fees that would have fallen in that, that, um, in past projects, the city was absorbing and now, and we, and Heidi, you may remember, I'm not sure when we did this, but, um, you know, whenever necessary, we pass on fees to the developer. Are there any fees that we perhaps are absorbing that should be?
Um, Mayor, so it was, it, it is already in your code that the fees be passed on, what you're, what you're, what I believe you're referencing are cost recovery fees. So the fees, um, incurred by the city for our city planner's review, as you know, they're an outside firm, just like our firm's review and any other technical, um, expertise in this case, um, they're, because the process happened, um, prior to CGA coming on board, we continued to use an outside surveying firm, the Haddon firm. So all of those fees, um, are paid for by the application process known as cost recovery. Um, I, I think that process is, is being improved, uh, globally with our finance director and our city manager and the administration. Um, but certainly, uh, the city should not be incurring the time and expense of the outside review on behalf of the city.
Okay. So those are being passed on where applicable?
Yes, those are the developer.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
I also wanted to clarify, Mayor, you, you mentioned something and I just, for the avoidance of doubt. this application, right now you're hearing a plat application. You will not be hearing a site plan application for this site. These are being built as the proposal is for four individual, single-family homes, so they will be processed through a regular permit process. There's not an additional hearing coming back to you, so I just want to clarify that so that there's no, no ruffled feathers in the future.
Anything else for discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item, one of the two items that they want to pull for individual discussion?
Ruachir.
Yes, sir.
I want to put a motion.
Motion to approve.
Approve resolution A and B of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to eleven A, presentation and resolution. Okay, and let's see, I think you should announce that.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Wanted the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Fahet?
Yes, so as we move to eleven, eleven A, I, I am going to be recusing myself from the discussion and deliberation and voting. I'll be doing so just as, as an abundance of caution. So I'm the middle high school principal at AIE Charter School, as you guys know. And for the last, like, four years, Manny Fabian was our middle school coach. We have a high school coach who's a parent by the name of Dennis Camarota. And then four months ago, because Manny is retiring, Brad became our middle school coach. He's not an employee, but he does get a stipend for coaching. So even though it's not a, a direct conflict of entrance, I, just in abundance of caution, so that there isn't a perceived conflict that, that could undermine the ultimate decision, I'm gonna sit this one out, and I trust that you guys are gonna come up with a great decision, so I'm gonna recuse myself.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So let's see, Heidi or JC, do you want to explain the process for this?
Yes, Mayor, as you requested at the last meeting, which was, and I want to make this clear, this was.
I'm sorry, did anybody have to talk about the item for discussion? Anybody want to, did anybody sign up on the item?
No.
No?
We don't have anyone signed up.
Okay, thank you.
As I was saying, the, I want to make it clear that you requesting, the council requesting presentations was in the RFP and it is allowable, so many, I, I want to make it, you guys were operating under what was allowed in the RFP. So this presentation, you have, the top two companies are gonna present to you. I do request, and we're gonna, we'll hand them out, that you rank them. There's, we have ranking sheets and you can score them accordingly. We want to do that as well. And let's see, Heidi, am I missing, am I forgetting anything? You know, and so what we're gonna draw, we want to do, and Tammy came up with this, is we've done this in the past, apparently, we'll draw the, a name and a number, and then that person, that organization will, will go according to the numbers that are drawn. So.
Okay, this for the tennis center management?
The tennis management contract.
Contract. So Tammy, just so we're clear, what we're drawing right now is the order of who will present. We have two presentations. Okay.
The, the names on the, on the paper?
We have three?
No, there's two, just two.
Okay. So I have Miami Tennis Pro Court is number two?
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
Pull them up.
Oh.
And you're gonna throw them in there and then.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I have trouble with simple instructions. Let me. Okay, not looking. Okay, Devisable Sports Solutions. And the number, number is number one. So they'll make their presentation first, is that correct? Okay, gentlemen?
Oh, and Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize to add this, but I want to make sure that this presentation is based on their original submittal. There's no negotiating on, on the dais. Your, your proposal is your proposal. So please, if, if somebody says, well, I'm gonna give you a better rate, I'm gonna do this, too late. Don't do it, don't do it now.
However, we can ask questions.
You can, you can ask all the questions you want.
We're just not negotiating yet.
Yeah, but no negotiating. They're, they're proposed, stand as they are.
And I just wanted to comment before they get started. The selection committee, the nominate, the selection committee that was put together, and it was five members, six members?
Five members.
Five members from the city that reviewed qualifications of the RFPs, of the companies, looked at all the, the items that we were looking for, that we had gotten input from residents, and they did a very, very thorough and good job of rating the, the companies that were supplying RFPs as to who they think is best based on the task, the information that we asked from them. However, the final vote, these are recommendations, they make, the, the selection committee makes a recommendation to the council as to who they think is best. The final vote is our responsibility, we're the ones that vote on anything, and it's like anything else, and I want to make that clear because, you know, there's some, I want to make sure everyone understands that we're responsible for making, voting based on our best judgment of all the information that's provided to us. And so this is a very important, critical component of the RFP, but ultimately, it's the city council that takes the information from what they've heard from residents, from what they've experienced, from what they perceive to be in the best interest of, of the city, knowing our situation and our budget, and it's our responsibility to, to decide based on all the information that's available to us. Okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
Councilman Vazquez?
Oh, I, I think a councillor wanted to see a copy of this.
We've seen it.
You've seen it.
Yeah, pretty much, they're the ones that drafted it.
At the end of both presentations, what will happen is the clerk is going to tally the, the totals, so.
He wants signatures and everything, so it should be.
Yes, so she'll collect those at the end of both presentations as a reminder. I think both firms were given fifteen minutes to present each, and then a question and answer session by the council.
Yes, please, thank you. And is that showing up on the screen for our virtual? Okay.
Should I start?
Yes, sure.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for inviting us to this presentation. My name is Andy Valiente, and I represent Valiente Tennis Academy. About us, the academy is based on the combined expertise and experiences of its directors and staff. We put together emphasis on fitness and conditioning, knowing that strong athletes make for great tennis players. Our philosophy is that tennis is a school of life where we coach players to become the best version of themselves on the court and in all aspects of life. Our core areas of training include fitness, tennis, physio, mental, and nutrition. Our solutions to maximize the potential of the tennis centers are programs that are inclusive from ages from three and up, time-saving right where they live, flexible, available from early morning to the night, ber, buried, different programs to suit different needs, convenient activities to keep kids engaged and social. Quality tennis programs will benefit the residents in these aspects. Improve general health, improve quality of life, heightened sense of community and ownership, increase property value, great sports programs are sought after, and the properties near to them command higher selling prices. Our proposal to manage the tennis center following specific municipal guidelines and regulations will focus on the following aspects: professionalism, knowledge of municipal work, interaction and partnership, qualifications and experience of the firm. Coral Gables, our main municipal experience comes from this location. We have worked there since 2018. At Coral Gables, we run youth tennis, high performance, fitness and conditioning, and camps like Winter and Summer. All of our programs are tied to an easy five-step registration. Step one, fill the athlete registration form. But, step two, pass or get a call for a free evaluation. Step three, play to get a level recommended. Step four, pay for your group and session and enjoy. Step five, leave your feedback to better serve you. All of our kids fill a registration form and waiver. We use the athlete profile form to gather more specific information used to personalize training. Post-match analysis form is used to evaluate play matches, and the pre- and post-practice log is a tool we provide to athletes to get an insight on how they feel before and after practice. This annual planning indicates the periods, loads, and intensities we analyze, plan and follow for tennis and fitness during all twelve months of the year. It's a macro guideline to plan classes, tournaments, and everything we do regarding training. Derived from the annual plan, daily practice forms are created for every program and level of instruction. Here is, health is one of the main concerns derived from planning in our academy. We recommend medical screening for young athletes, especially for the heart. SED is an unexpected death caused by the cardiovascular conditions that can be avoided by early screening. Nicklaus Children's Hospital is offering free pediatric electrocardiograms testing to children's ages from five to twenty-one. Lack of planning, excessive, and excessive aerobic work in young athletes produces a premature thickening of the walls of the heart, limiting their full development. Another condition is athlete's heart, an unnecessary enlargement of the left ventricle due to excessive aerobic work. Lack of planning and excessive aerobic work promote red muscle fibers, making tennis athletes low. Our training is planned to be anaerobic and inside formation of white muscle fibers, specific for situational sports, such as tennis. Osgood Slatter Disease is a common cause of knee pain in growing kids. It's an inflammation of the area below the knee where the tendon from the kneecap attaches to the shin bone. These are exercises to mitigate this disease. Applying the exercises from the previous slide in a group of fifty-two athletes, there were just one athlete with mild OS disease. This is a one point ninety-two percent compared to the twenty-one percent without preventive work. Our training is designed to mitigate injuries. To be able to plan and execute a program at the level I have described, our director, Jorge Valiente, has the following credentials. Degree: Bachelor in Science, in Science in Physical Education, Sports and Fitness. Certificates: USPTA, PTR, NCSF, Net Generation, Safe Sport, Advanced Sport Massage, and Neuromuscular Therapy. These are the most relevant documents requested in the RFP. Florida Department of State Certificate of Status. Insurance, including the city of Miami Springs. E-Verify, a federal system to confirm if a prospect is authorized to work in the United States. Qualification and experience of the project team. Our company organization for this project. Jorge Valiente is the director of all the programs. Oscar Ottega is the head of tennis, Andy Valiente is the head of, of fitness. If selected to run the tennis center, we will make an offer to the two coaches working there, Mr. Tomas Rodriguez and Silvio Martinez, to come work for us. Our staff and principal, and principal are affiliated to the following entities: USPTA, PTR, ITF, NCSF, USDA International Federation of Pickleball, Cardio Tennis, Net Generation, and Safe Sport. Our coaches' specific resumes, resumes are listed in our proposal. Our team experience and certificates are: Andy Valiente, twelve-year experience, eight certifications. Oscar Ottega, twenty-five-year experience, six certifications. Eduardo Camarota, twelve-year experience, four certifications. Austin Gonzalez, six-year experience, five certifications. Tao Castillo, six-year experience, five certifications. Previous projects and references. Our previous projects include Coral Gables already mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. Horizon's Community Association, we provide instruction for juniors and adult players year-round, including a summer camp program since 2014, ten-year experience. Madder Academy School, we provide them tennis and fitness instructions since 2012. Instruction is for all levels of junior athletes from basic to events. Code of Ordinances for the city. We have glanced at the code of ordinances and know that it has titles from one to fifteen. It doesn't say much about tennis, except that the center is located at a P-one district, in a P-one district. From experience working at Coral Gables, signage is always a sensitive matter. Upon reviewing the city code, there are several regulations, prohibitions, and exceptions, starting in Title Fifteen, Chapter One Fifty, Article Two, Sections One Fifty dash zero twenty-nine to one hundred and fifty dash zero thirty-seven. We will review the regulations in your code to accommodate the needs arising from the operations of the tennis center. We will be in close contact with the Department of the City Manager if we have any doubts. Project implementation strategy. We have a five-point strategy. Evaluation of BNU needs and communication. Facility inventory, physical condition of structures, buildings, equipment, surroundings. Evaluation and results. Evaluation and solutions for short, medium, and long terms. Communication. Will work in partnership with the city department responsible of maintenance, improvements, and marketing. Office equipment, systems, and security. Office equipment. We will acquire office furniture, equipment, and supplies for the shop. Accounting and POS software. We will use accounting software made by Wave, or POS and software will be supplied by Hilton. Court reservation software. We will use your courts. The system is user-friendly and will allow us to manage reservations, court usage, and scheduling. Sourcing of club and training equipment. The shop will be equipped with a stringing machine and rackets, paddles, bags, apparel, shoes, and accessories for sale. Our supplier for tennis and core equipments are Babelot, Dunlop, Solenco, and Torno. Our suppliers for pickleball equipment are Babelot and Gamma. Training, planning, and assigning of tasks. Annual planning is done once a year. We will fit our actual planning and coach scheduling to the needs of the tennis center. Tasks will be assigned to every coach according to their expertise. Actually, the program hours to cover are fifteen and the hours of operation ninety-two. This table reflects more man-hours than needed to cover the actual needs. Marketing and advertising. Stage one, email, website, social media, online, in your courts platform, digital newsletter. Stage two, branding, promotional. Stage two, branding, promotional material, outdoor signage, flyers, and brochures. Stage three, Miami Springs social media, Miami Springs website and email, special events, media relations. Special Consideration. App for Remote Instruction. This is the first tennis academy in Miami to offer this solution. App Benefits and Features. Train Anywhere, 100% potable, offers stats, metrics, and reports, nutrition tracking, available to athletes of all ages. Here I have a few videos that you guys can see us doing a little bit of conditioning. Tennis Center Improvements. Pro Shop Update and Amenities. Implementation of rest and shaded island in between courts and outdoor furniture to provide comfort to the tennis players. Pro Shop Update and Amenities. The pro shop should reflect the quality of the services that Valiente Tennis Academy plans to offer and the standards of a city that cares for its residents. We will update and equip it with the furniture and equipment to offer residents and users a pleasant and professional tennis atmosphere. We will also install a large TV screen and a ice machine. What we would not tolerate is the tennis center to look like this. Updated and with useless fixtures, a messy pro shop, a mismatched and disorganized sitting area, uncapped surroundings, dirty premises. The shop now looks like this. But we want it to look like this. We will show you that we care. Outdoor Training Gym. Resistant Training is a form of exercise intended to increase muscular strength and endurance. As part of our complete athlete philosophy, we plan to implement functional outdoor training to complement our programs. Price Proposal. We lament the campaign of misinformation inflicted on the residents of Miami Springs by competitors that have nothing better to offer. Clarifications. Look at the prices offered by Miami's tennis pros here. Their prices on the left are higher than ours on the right with the exact same programs. Their private lessons go up to $100 per hour.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry George. Can we put your screen that way so we can see the comparisons that you're showing? You see how I see?
This one?
No, no, no. Right there on the TV.
The name on it.
To put it to the left because I can't see.
Yeah, yeah, like that?
Perfect. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Alright, so, there you go. So this is the, on the left is theirs, decided on ours on the right, with the exact same programs. Now, their private lessons go up to $100 per hour. Hours starts at 65 and go up to $70 per hour. Sorry, here. Their academy fee is $50, our fee is $25, and is waived for city residents, military, and their families. Their memberships go from $75 for seniors all the way to $380 for families. Hour starts at 75 for seniors and kids and go to $260 for families. Their free proposal is 10% to the city after all expenses for after-school programs and 20% after all expenses for tournaments. They offer no split to the city for clinics, private lessons, memberships, or anything else. Now, this is our full price schedule with a split equivalent to 30% from revenue for programs and memberships. This is our, sorry, tab, Programs. Youth Tennis Player Progression. We follow the ITF guidelines for player development, recreational tennis programs. Youngsters are recreational introduction to tennis. Orange Generation, kids learn more fundamentals of tennis as a fun and controlled environment. Orange Generation Plug, kids continue progressing and gaining power and speed. Startup Yellow, kids can handle the bigger court and the speed of the faster yellow ball. Competition Yellow, kids can sustain a rally, points are fun, and play in a no-pressure environment. Awake, ages 2 and 1/2 to 4, inspires children to get active and to learn to play the sport at a young age. Competitive Tennis Program, all of these programs include fitness and need to be tested prior to being offered. Include a Rice Red, a Rice Orange, a Rice Green, Ascend PT, Ascend FT. Pickleball Startup, program for beginners. Pickleball Intermediate, for players that understand the rules, move consistently, rally, and execute back ends. When the RFP was published, it made no mention of dedicated pickleball courts. The inauguration of four pickleball courts on March 25th is an opportunity to organize a community in pickleball and tennis leagues that we will support and help sponsor.
15 more seconds.
I hope that you can evaluate our presentation objectively and based on the experience, knowledge, benefits, and revenue that we will bring to the city. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
You so much. Hey, do we have any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I just had no questions. I had questions, but throughout the PowerPoint you kind of just answered them. I just wanted to thank you for coming here and showcasing your business. I know it takes a lot of courage, a lot of time, and a lot of effort, and I like the drive that I see. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Yeah.
You said you're running the program at Horizons and at Coral Gables.
Yeah.
Right now. Do they have pickleball courts, either of them?
Uh, no.
Okay. So as far as pickleball courts?
So I am pickleball certified, coach.
Okay, but your academy doesn't have any experience in running?
Not really.
Okay. What challenges do you see with that?
So, I don't see many. It's a brand new and there's no real structure in it right now. So it's a lot easier to get a structure going when there's none. So you don't have to break apart anything and start with anything new. I think this will work great. I haven't run one, but I've seen many. And usually what happens is just reservations and they got, they put the paddles up everywhere. So what we're trying to do, as we said about beginners pickleball, intermediate pickables is we're going to have coaches that actually teach you how to play the game. So we want to have classes, we want to help with tournaments, leagues. So we actually want to make something kind of like a tennis academy environment also for the pickables. So we don't want to, you know, have them be left out. Want them to, if they want to and they want to have lessons, group lessons, they want to get better and they want to have a private, all of that, they can do it. And if they just want to play in their leagues and have fun, they can also do that.
Okay. Did I get this right? 15 hours, you said 15 and 92?
So 15 is the hours of operation right now for you guys. So that's how long, that's how long the programs are running for a week.
The academy.
The academy.
The academy.
Right, and there's 92 hours of operation.
Okay, and the hours of operation would be what?
92.
But what, I'm sorry, what times are you envisioning?
7 to 9.
7 to 9?
7 AM to 9 PM.
Weekends also? Right now, I know right now we...
Weekends, it will be up to, if the city has any difference, but it usually should be 7 to 6, 7 to 4.
Right now, our city is 7 to, well, I think it's 6, but it's really...
Right now, it's 7 to 8.
To daylight.
It's 7 to 8. That's the hours you guys have. Usually on a Saturday or Sunday, not a lot of people tend to be there at that hour. But we will be running it for sure. We'll have people there if that's what the city asks for.
So you're saying if the city asks you to do it longer on weekends?
Yeah, do you mean that, you know, that is actually being used?
What, um... The fees that you propose? What guarantee do you have that that's what the fees will be, that they won't be raised? This is a three-year contract or five-year?
I believe this is five years.
Five years?
Five years, okay.
One more five?
So...
What is the question? In the five years, what is the guarantee that I won't raise them?
Well, yes, and raise them within a year because we're asking for revenue sharing. And this is one of the surprising things which I find it interesting that we have residents who want to play for free, but they also want us to, you know, our management team to share revenue with us. And, you know, we pay for, if you go to the rec center, you're using the gym unless you're a child, you're paying to use it. The aquatic center, we pay to have access to the aquatic center. All of the programs that we have, the Little League and the basketball camps and everything, you know, we're charging for those to be able to run them.
So as far as we see it, is the courts are being used very little. The facility is not really being taken advantage of. So if we were only using those 15 hours, that would be a problem, let's say. But for example, there could be group lessons in the mornings for adults, right? That brings in revenue.
Okay, so let me go back. What you're saying is that if you're only providing the 15 hours that your proposal says of academy hours, that'll be a problem for you to...
If you think about it, it wouldn't be a problem for us. But if you think about the split, it wouldn't be that much. That's why you're saying that much of a profit. But it's only 15 hours a week. You have four courts, four pickleball courts, and you're using 15 hours a week. What is that a day? You know, it's like three hours a day that you're using the courts, if we break it down?
And I guess my question is really, it's not the revenue sharing for us as much as the cost, maintaining the cost. Because right now you showed us a comparison of how your fees are going to be very reasonable. How do we, what assurance do we have that in six months and a year, and five years is quite a long time, that the fees won't be increased because you need to do it to make, you know, you're obviously...
We don't need the money to, we don't need to make money from those programs. We can run more programs, like group, like actually taking advantage of courts. Instead of running three hours a day, we can run for 12 hours a day, running programs at every single hour.
Mayor, if I just may add something to answer your question. Regardless of who you pick, I will put in language in the contract as far as increases in rates will need to be approved by the city manager.
Alright, thank you.
Okay?
That's totally fine by us.
Okay.
Again, as I said, we are not thinking of that in any sense. We can make the money anywhere else because we have three hours being used. We have nine more hours that we can put programs in for adults, for different ages of kids, like I said, starting on 2 and 1/2. More programs for kids. We can do adults again at night. You know, we can also add some free play there for the adults between hours. So there's plenty of things to do that would not have us go into, you know, the prices for those lessons at all. We don't need to.
Through the chair.
Yes.
And it's in their best benefit to really maximize the use of the city asset because they are doing a profit sharing based on gross sales. And that's a huge, huge difference from net. Net is really up, if you're going to do profit sharing off of net, that's after, you know, the entity has paid off all of their operations. So for me, a more consistent approach to secure if we're going to get into this profit sharing the way that this RFP was sent out would be through gross sales.
Yes, the thing to consider though is this, that even though...
Not of profits.
Even though you have 24 hours of court, realistically, you can only give lessons when kids are out of school. You know, after school and in the mornings, adults work. You have some that, you know, have the time to, so you know, there is, it's not these hours in reality. And this is a challenge, and I understand with tennis, everyone wants to play, you know, right after dinner, right before dinner, or, you know, right when the kids, and that is one of the challenges with the tennis courts. Okay, I had another question while you were doing your presentation. Does anyone else have any questions? Hey.
I do have a question, I guess, in reference to your directors and assistant directors. I see that you have like 50 hours each yourself and I guess George. But in the Gables location, what difference do you have? Because it seems like 50 hours here, 50 hours over there, before you know it, I don't see how that's manageable, but...
Yeah, so we have all the staff. This is the staff for this... For Springs.
Okay.
Yeah, so they won't be conflicting with anybody. The people here will be here, the people over there will be over there.
Alright, great.
So how many coaches will you have here?
It was around, I have it right here, eight, I believe.
I'm not counting...
Six coaches. So we'll be setting six coaches here, including fitness.
And then the academy would end at what time on a, say on a weekday?
Night.
The academy.
Like the academy programs?
Yes, the classes.
The after-school programs.
Yes.
So usually, so what we do since we run from 2 and 1/2 years to 4, starting that one, so we start at 2. 2 to 3 usually kids, they finish school around 1:50, 1:40, the kindergartens. So we put a class at 2, that the parents can just kind of drop them off and get an extra hour. Then after that, it goes pretty much by ages, you know, ages group, all the way to 5. So 3 to 4 would be like orange ball, red ball, 4 to 5 would be... 4 to 5 will be green dot, intermediate, and then 5 to 7 will be more like competition, right, all of that. 7 to 8, we're thinking of adult lessons again, group lessons, right? They can come, they can play right after work, right, for dinner, after dinner. And then 7, 8 to 9 will be open. If anybody wants to play, then we'll have somebody, we'll have staff there.
So on a weeknight, if an adult wants to play, not lessons, but they just want to play?
8 to 9, yeah.
Every weeknight, that's the only time that it'd be available?
No, if there's courts they can play, of course.
Pardon me?
If there's courts they can play, or if they make a reservation.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. The, to play tennis?
Yeah.
Okay, you're going to have the classes, you're saying, until 8 o'clock. So which courts are you going to have available for someone else?
So for example, if we run an adult group lesson, it's very rare that we're going to have to use four courts. So let's say we have eight people, that's two courts. There's two courts open. If anybody wants to come and play, they can play.
Through the chair.
Can they make a, one second please, can they make a reservation?
Of course, that's the system, wait, your courts. So they can reserve in advance and then we wouldn't be able to take that court.
Okay, so if they reserve, okay, okay. So they have the ability to reserve for 6:30?
Of course.
A court, and you would, and it wouldn't be, well, no, we have the courts, we're waiting to see who shows up for the... I'm trying to just understand.
Yeah, so we try to do by reservation. So that is not like, oh, we have to wait and then the court is not being used and the facility is not being used to its fullest potential. So if there's a reservation, then we know that court is not to be touched. If there's no reservations, then we can take the court and use it for the programs.
Alright.
That was what I was going to say, Mayor, that they had an app for your courts, which is a nice log to have for us too, so that we can see how they're maximizing their use of their courts as well. So we can use it as a way to navigate and see how this is being used and the demand.
And as far as the pickleball courts then, they're just going to be open? How do you anticipate the pickleball courts on, say, weeknights, which I know is the busiest time?
Yeah, so that one we will go with the, with the pickleballs, how they want to do it. If they want us to run some programs, we can use a court or two for an actual group lesson. If they have leagues night or something like that, then we wouldn't run anything.
Generally, I anticipate the majority or, you know, people that want to play pickleball, like tennis, you know?
They can reserve the courts.
You want to play doubles or singles?
We're going to have reservations for that as well. So it's not all the craziness and you don't know who's in there and all of that. There's also another thing that a lot of places do is certain days a week, let's say we do Wednesday and Friday, is free play, which is where you put the racket and everybody can just use the course and they keep rotating. They just rotate and rotate and everybody plays everybody. So we're also thinking of implementing that.
For the pickleball.
For the pickleball, yeah.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you so much. Alright, thank you so much. We greatly appreciate your presentation. Thank you for your interest. Yes, sir.
Reference to the improvements to the facility.
Yeah.
What, is that written there, like exactly what they're gonna do?
Excuse me. I'll make sure that whatever's in their proposal gets incorporated into the contract so that they have to, you're gonna do what they said they're gonna do.
Through the chair, and to piggyback, that's a good point. I wrote here, um, I'd like to see the stages of implementation for the capital improvements, maybe like a timeline, because obviously you're just starting, so something that we can use as a guide to see.
Yeah, okay, we can work that out for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Really appreciate.
Let me tell.
Okay, and now we'll have the um the presentation, call out the name correctly. Yes, and please thank you. We'll have a the presentation by Miami Tennis Pro Court.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council, city manager and all city officials.
How are you?
Everybody here listening in and online. My name is Brad Mixon and I'm representing Miami Tennis Pro Corp. It's a privilege to be here speaking to you all tonight. It's been an honor to serve the Miami Springs community for the past couple years. I'd like to begin by sharing that Jesus Christ is my Lord and Savior and that everything I do is based on that foundation. Then I serve the people as an overflow of love and gratitude. I guess I control the slides here. A tidbit of my background. I grew up in Kendall as the youngest of four children in a middle-class family. I played soccer, baseball, basketball, and tennis as a child. My dad introduced me to each of those sports. The tennis began when I'd go to Miami Dade College and watch him play with his buddies. Then he'd hit the ball around with me afterwards. I quickly fell in love with tennis. I was obsessed with any sport that had a ball, and I still have that love for sports. As a junior, I excelled in tennis and I gave up the other sports when I was number one in Florida at twelve years old. I went on to compete nationally and internationally till I was eighteen. During all those years, I was the number one junior in Florida and top ten in the country, as high as number two in USA when I was fourteen. When I went to college, I was a blue chip athlete and the number eight recruit in the country, played at Florida State on a full scholarship. And my team was as high as number seven in college tennis. I went on to play some professional tennis, but quickly got into teaching and came home because I love being with my family and friends. I've been teaching tennis over fifteen years, got into pickleball in twenty eighteen while I was at Ocean Reef Club on their staff. I love the relationships I've developed through my years of coaching. I've coached state and national champions, as well as several children who've gone on to play D-one tennis and professional tennis. I go home each night to my beautiful wife, Lindsay, who you will see on the next slide, and our four children, Haley, Landon, Aiden, and Mackenzie. I pointed. Our team of coaches has competed, ha- have competed as players and coached top international talent. Silvio and Tomas both coached Cuban Fed Cup players and have trained many others to compete at the highest level. There's no question our team is qualified and equipped to perform the necessary tasks at hand. On our team, we have thorough experience with recreational tennis, which is the majority of the tennis here at the academy. We have the ability to take any kid and develop them to receive a college scholarship and take it to the pro tour if they wish. But the large majority of Miami Springs kids see tennis as a social time to enjoy the sport with their friends. Our staff has extensive experience playing and coaching at elite levels. Not only have we taught for many years, we also do continuing education annually and ensure that our staff is well-trained. Uh, we are PTR certified and I'm USPTA Elite Pro, which is uh, the highest you can you can achieve. And then I am currently the Vice President of South Florida with USPTA, and I have been for uh several years. We will care for the senior who plays once or twice per month, the child who's trying out a racket sport for the very first time, and the competitive player who wants to play nationally or aim for a college scholarship. All of these individuals will be catered to and treated with the utmost care. Our unique characteristic is the ability to work together with those people of all ages, genders, and skill sets. Every patron will be greeted by their first name and welcomed with a smile as personal touch and premier service are staple of ours. The relationships our team has built with the children and families of this community are meaningful to us. I've been working with Manny and the Miami Springs community for nearly two years, and I've seen the books on the baseline and the ceiling numbers to determine what is financially viable. We can create new programs and grow at some level, but only so many people will come and continually pay for the services. The recent addition to have four tennis courts and four pickleball courts was a smart move by the city as this will accommodate more patrons. Even so, the space allows for only so much activity. There's not wiggle room to bring more players as it would take away from residents or one of the other existing programs. I have to make a decision that will be best for myself, my family, and our team of coaches. I'm familiar with the court availability, the community, and the demographics here. Under the new arrangement, I don't see how any company will survive without an increase in prices. I proposed what I could manage, which was a stretch for me due to my adoration for the families and players I've formed a bond with here. We also have pickleball coaching experience. Our residents love pickleball. Our staff include Christian and Mark. Uh, Mark is a personal trainer and pickleball instructor. Christian has years of pickleball instructing uh as well. They're very personable uh to be around. Many residents would like to improve their level of play to compete in tournaments as well. We have a team of coaches who can service this group and coach them at an elite level. As for pickleball, I'm a highly rated player currently competing against top-ranked professionals. I use that experience to keep me in tune with the evolving game and pass on the new skills needed to keep my students informed. We have years of knowledge in pickleball instruction, which our city currently has a great need for. I followed my contract to a T. Any problems that arose were a result of trying to fit a watermelon into a golf hole. I assure you, it's a tight squeeze. I was open to adjustments as necessary and listened to the city and the residents. The residents asked us to turn the lights on during weekends and keep them on till eight PM, and we honored that. When asked to give residents more court space, we sacrificed a lesson many days, leaving an extra court for the patrons. Residents wanted more free play options, so we honored that request. Weekdays before four PM and weekends after one PM. We highly value our senior community, so we grandfathered them at the three-dollar rate in acknowledgement of their fixed incomes. Racketball costs remained at three dollars due to the court conditions. Many of the players who expressed their wishes refused to return as they chose to play at alternative sites, not giving themselves a chance to realize the accommodations we had made. I can say we'll give City of Miami Springs twenty-five or thirty percent gross, but I know it won't be sustainable after a couple months. I've seen what works and what does not. I have to make a financially sound decision. To keep our business going, we'd have to increase costs to offset the additional expenses. It really comes down to what the city wants. Our business plan is not to increase costs to the community, but to continue offering premier quality service at reasonable prices and to make sure we can provide for our families at the end of the day. I acknowledge that pickleball company Miami Springs Tennis Center has been accompanied by more attention, some hurdles, and growing pains. I don't regret the pickleball addition because it's certainly the best thing for the overall group. I'm proud to say the number of patrons at our facility has tripled. Let's face it, it's because pickleball was added. It's great to see the overall well-being of our residents improved by this fact. More people off the couch and being active. I see smiling faces as eight-year-old boys are rallying with seventy-five-year-old women. It's truly a beautiful thing how this has brought the community together. I'm very proud to have been a part of this. It's about enhancing community life, fostering social connections and benefits to all. I've shown good faith, care, and goodwill to the community. Would love the opportunity to continue serving Miami Springs if the city will have me. I've been balancing a continuation of how things had been with the implementation of new creative ideas since I came in under the previous arrangement. The reservation system, um, Court Reserve is the name of the reservation system. Unfortunately, it was overlooked by the uh Evaluation Committee. I'm sure that was unintentional. However, it's a key component to running our daily operation. I do have experience using this system, which includes an app and it's user-friendly. We would check patrons in at the front office with reservations made further in in advance for members. Tournaments, leagues, clinics, weather announcements, schedule changes, and point of sale will all be done through Court Reserve, which is either online or through an app on your phone. It has a lot of other cool features also. As per City of Miami Springs requests, we will open the facility and a member of our staff will be on site from open to close. This will be very costly to our company as people are at work and school throughout the day. And the courts are unoccupied for many hours. It's unwise for a business to keep the doors open during hours that generate no revenue on a daily basis. In fact, tennis centers that have this business model we're discussing close down midday. We will spend well over ten thousand dollars monthly in staffing expenses. We also have other overhead costs, including, but not limited to, supplies, equipment, insurance, bookkeeping, and software. Our staff will manage the daily needs of the facility, ma- will make sure it's clean and well-kept, leaves are blown, and all needs are handled promptly. Here's the schedule. Monday through Friday, seven thirty to nine thirty PM. Saturday, seven thirty AM to eight PM. Again, that was a request by our residents. Sunday and holidays, seven thirty AM to sundown. One of the big challenges we will face is assuring every patron gets court time. The most popular times to play, five to nine PM on weekdays and eight to eleven AM on weekends. During those times, people may have to wait. We'll use the reservation system to mitigate some of this. Players will know when they have a court and how long they have it for. Uh, singles play will be sixty minutes, doubles play up to ninety minutes. If no one books the court, they have an option to extend their time. Here's the uh court fees. Uh, I'm gonna focus on on my fees, but you guys did get a chance to already see those. Um, court fees, seven thirty AM to twelve PM. Three dollars per hour, Monday to Friday. For residents, four dollars per hour for non-residents. Noon to four will be free of charge. Um, and then nighttime is four PM to nine thirty PM. Five dollars per hour for residents, six dollars per hour for non-residents. Again, um, seniors are grandfathered in at the three-dollar rate at any time. Here's the annual memberships. They include, but are not limited to, pref- preferred reservations seven days ahead. Ten percent off pro shop sales and services, unlimited play for the year, and a Court Reserve member account. This app has many fun features that will keep players connected and up to speed on all the happenings at the tennis center. Here's the hourly private lessons. Academy students get a uh sixty-five-dollar rate for the hour. The uh residents pay seventy dollars for the hour, and the price is uh slightly higher with the tennis director. Non-residents pay seventy-five generally. Ninety percent or more of our traffic is uh Miami Springs or Virginia Gardens residents. The clinics are also remaining the same, just like the private lessons, same price as they have been. Uh, twenty-five per hour for residents, thirty per hour for non-residents. Here's the tennis academy. Uh, we have five groups, starting at five years old with the peewees, going through rookies, quick start, developmental, and high performance, up to eighteen years old, and uh their prices are listed here. Some of them play, um, the minimum is eight hours per month, so those are monthly costs uh listed. And the developmental and high-performance groups play eighteen hours, up to eighteen hours per uh month. The tournaments and leagues, uh, we ran one pickleball tournament and uh it went really well. So those will vary by event. Some may be a uh charity event, others may be structured differently. We'll also start leagues, which is uh here an eight-week league with the last week being a finals. Okay, thank you. The open play sessions are facilitated by our staff and bring people together, especially for new players to come in and and meet new partners and opponents. We have the summer camp. Uh, we do offer a full-day camp. Typically, uh, we haven't had a lot of demand for the full day, so we've stuck with a half-day camp. The pro shop sales and services, we offer snacks and drinks, uh, anything that racket sport players will need in a pro shop. The uh revenue sharing is here. We will keep all the revenue from private lessons, clinics, and pro shop sales. We'll give ten percent of net revenue from after-school programs, which is the tennis academy and summer camps, as well as twenty percent of net revenue from tournaments, leagues, memberships, court fees, and open play.
Fifteen seconds if you wanna wrap it up.
Okay. That's all I had to share, so thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Um, I have a question, and I just kinda addressed it with the other group, and it's in reference to you your time and your staffing of yourself in particular. Uh, I know you have the other, you know, another venue that you do most of your uh coaching and teaching and um as much as I like what I heard from you, and I think a lot of times when there's uh someone that has a connection with the community, it's important for a community like us, but the reality is that you're, you can't guarantee us that you're gonna be here fifty hours or more a week. Because it hasn't been the case is what I've heard. You, you, not just lately, I'm talking about from the beginning. And that's what my concern is, that you're, you know, you're not really able to staff enough people here, like yourself, to give us the best quality of uh you know, coaching and teaching our kids too.
Sure. Yeah, I understand your concern there, and um my priority would be here with Miami Springs Tennis Center, and we have uh lengthy staff, and I would be here um almost all the time, leading that uh operation. Uh, the model had been different when I came in, in terms of um, the hours that the academy is is playing and when um there's demand for people to play in general. So that has, you know, kind of um controlled the amount of time spent at the courts.
Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Going back to staffing, I think that that's gonna be a direct reflection of of the revenue, right? For you, obviously, you you come first, you have the business. So I think, I mean, I'm not a tennis pro, I'm not a pickleball pro, but I do know about business, right? So I'm very into the amount of hours that you put in. about business, right? So I'm very into the amount of hours that you put into your business is probably going to be reflective of what you will make, so do you have a dedicated staff for the courts at all times, and how many staff members are there?
Yes, I do. Yes. I have seven coaches altogether. And then I have my wife who helps with office manager, and I have a couple other people who help with the office. So altogether, we have eleven, twelve staff members.
Right, and my other question is, I know that the RFP went out and we were requesting, the city was requesting certain things. You've come this far, so I consider you a very lucky man because we were requesting an RFP, a seventy-thirty split. So obviously, we've taken into consideration the sensitivity of this matter and your community connection. But I do think that there is a tremendous demand in the city. Before, we were trying to keep people out of Miami Springs. Actually, people didn't know about Miami Springs, and now everybody wants to be coming to Miami Springs. There has to be some sort of demand at all times of the day. I mean, again, I'm not a professional in this sport, but I did receive a couple of phone calls myself. Perhaps, you know, the older population, you know, the older population, obviously, because they're more available during the day. I know you were saying that during the day it's not very busy, so you guys are not there. Understandably, you're going to reassess and see how you're going to work the courts and your timing based on the demand. But I think that has a lot to do with your offerings, right, and your availability. So thank you for coming out here and presenting your your business to us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me ask you with the, and this is the thing. You know, tennis, it's not just people are working or the kids are at school. If you play tennis, and I do, you don't want to play in the middle of the day. It's exhausting. You know, even if you're off, you're not going to, you know, you're going to try to avoid to play at noon, one, two, three, because there's only so much energy you can have before. Not that some people don't, but for the majority of people. So that's a difficult time slot to fill, and I understand that. As far as the pricing, the prices that you gave us, and I know you said this is what you're doing, which is what you feel is, you know, and again, this is a business. We're asking, these aren't employees that we're hiring. We're asking them to run a business, make a profit, and share their profit with us, but their profit is going to mainly come from classes, from the academies, from teaching classes, right? And if you're teaching classes and you're holding up the courts so that they're not available for residents who play, like I would, you know, of going to to want to play singles or doubles. So it's difficult because you've only got a limited number of, and I understand that. The prices that you are quoting, what guarantee do we have? That, and I know, J C, and I appreciate what you said of that you're going to put it in there, that it would have to come for council approval. But what guarantee do you have, or what do you perceive as, you know, from now to the next, let's not go five years, next two or three years, that those will be prices will stay the same, and I understand you've kept the prices pretty similar. For the longest time, the court fees in Miami Springs were the lowest of anywhere in Dade County.
Yes.
I was playing down south at J C C for ten dollars court fees, and there were three here. So we've, the city, you know, has had them very, very reasonable until recently, and they're still good, but obviously, that's a concern. What do you anticipate? And I know J C answered the guarantee part that it has to come before us, but realistically, what's important is, you know, that you can be in business and do this.
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. The guarantee for me would be what I propose is certainly for one year, and then we would look at that, and as J C mentioned, it would need city approval if we were to go up. But during that time, we would see how the business is running and continue creating new programs. The gentleman who spoke before me used our previous prices verbatim from top to bottom, and my increase was based on the request by the city to take a percentage, and so as if I'm making a small profit the last year to two, and I need to give a percentage, then I have to offset the costs. So again, I say, not sure how somebody in that position can make a living for themselves, pay their coaches, and run a business. But to answer your question, I would guarantee it for that year.
And how is our contract written, J C? Is it?
We don't have contracts.
I thought the RFP said five, one years. Is that not right?
To the chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to approve eleven A for, see here.
Well, we have to vote.
Oh, we're waiting. God, sorry. So after we rate, then we?
We got to give it to.
And then we'll give them to Erica.
Erica, evaluate the points, and then give it to Erica, and she'll do the final ranking evaluation.
I think so, yeah. Thanks.
So the points are on the spreadsheet.
Yes.
I'm going to look at Vice Mayor.
Thank you all.
So basically, the maximum points are over in the white column, and the criteria of qualifications is there along with the description, so you can rank them anywhere up to those points, no more than those points, and it should equal a total of a hundred points if they got
If you got all points for everything.
The full points for everything.
And then we give this to Erica?
And then you're going to give it to Erica, and she has the final ranking to tally.
The tally. Want to check our math?
Yeah, a question. While we're rating this, just Brad, were you doing improvements to the facility? And the improvements that you gentlemen are offering, you were paying for. You're covering the cost. Thank you.
Can I get a little paper? Any chance? Because I'm like, I made notes and it's not very clear. Okay, I'll give you this one. Okay.
J C, I have a question. The, what we're paying the firms, it's the same amount? For both?
We're paying.
We're not paying anything.
We were not going to be paying anything.
For the management.
Yes, the revenue split.
The revenue split total.
Yeah. And the idea behind that, it's kind of like they're using our facility to run their business. It's rent, basically, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Why, why is it that I hear the music? And the final Japanese phrase. No, I'm just looking at it. Yeah. Yeah, I think we're okay.
What's going on, Maria? Where are you going?
The mayor's chair. The life of its own.
Corporations that may be getting rid of their furniture.
Isn't it kind of funny?
Remember when men used to have your second system?
On graduation.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. He's got a summer class he has to do, and then we have to be Panthers now.
Moving on, he's starting to fall.
You know, still working his hours at my home. He has to have his little bit of money. I couldn't look.
Oh, you're ready, Erica? Sorry, yes. Just double double.
Do I announce the final number or just?
Mayor, do you want me to announce the final numbers or?
I think just, yes, the final total numbers, I guess, from the whole council, right? Just the total number for each.
For each proposer, yes. Okay, Per Devisful Sports Solutions, doing business as Valiente Tennis Academy, has a score of three hundred and sixty-seven. Miami Tennis Pro Core has a total number of two hundred and seventy-eight, meaning Devisful would be the the winner.
Okay. All right, so oh, okay, motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. Okay. I'd like to go ahead and approve eleven A. Presentations as resolutions, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, selecting Valiente Tennis Academy for professional tennis management and operation services for the Miami Springs Tennis Center, pursuant to request for proposal number zero-one dash twenty-three slash twenty-four, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
No.
Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to both of you coming out, and congratulations, Valiente. We look forward to working with you.
This will take effect when, J C?
Yep, make an agreement. Do an agreement.
We have to finalize the contract, so once that gets finalized.
Once it gets finalized, then, and I believe Brad was on month-to-month, so we'll we'll finalize that contract. Should be soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to having you at the tennis center.
Thank you, Brad, for coming up.
Good. Thank you, Fred.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All the best.
So we are, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we go to item C, twelve C? Plus by staff to discuss.
Eleven B.
Ordinance of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, comprehensively amending the city code of ordinances to allow notice by publication to be made in any manner permitted under Florida law, including through publicly accessible websites, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for clarification, and providing for an effective date. This is an ordinance on first reading. The reason for this ordinance is, I think most of you were briefed during your individual agenda briefings, is there was a recent state law that allows cities and counties to advertise online on websites. And there are websites that are designated by the county for this purpose. In Miami Springs, we have traditionally, for most of our advertising needs, we have traditionally advertised in the Daily Business Review, which is considered, or was considered, a newspaper of general circulation under the law, and that has a specific meaning under the law. So it qualified, and the reason that we would often use the Daily Business Review is because it was far less expensive than the Miami Herald. And when I say far less expensive, I mean like a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars at times, that kind of difference, so. Um, and when I say far less expensive, I mean, like a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars at times, that kind of difference. So, um, we have recently, uh, as of December, we've been unable to use the Daily Business Review for this purpose. Um, the Daily Business Review has moved to a completely online platform. And so, uh, in order to be a newspaper of general circulation under Florida law, you have to have a print version. And so they no longer qualify. So that leaves us really with the Miami Herald, which is, as I said, very expensive. So what this ordinance does is it amends various parts of our code that currently provide for, um, advertising in newspapers of general circulation, and it provides us with the option, it's not that we have to do it this way, but it gives us the option to be able to advertise online. Um, so it's it's providing an additional vehicle, uh, so to speak, for publication. Um, this does not address our charter requirements. So Miami Springs, like many cities throughout the county, provides in in various parts of the charter for news for advertising in a newspaper of general circulation. So the only way that we'll obviously be able to update that is by doing a charter amendment, which of course has to go to the voters. So some cities are doing that as part of their, um, charter review process. I know Roger and I are both um, involved in those in some other cities currently, so they'll be placing a question to that effect on their November twenty twenty four ballots or at the earliest opportunity. Um, this ordinance will only address your city code of ordinances, and I'm sure that our procurement staff, as well as our city clerk's office, will be very happy to have this option. The only caveat that Roger and I have, and I have to commend Roger, who has been, uh, working very closely on this issue and has been the lead at our firm on it um, for all of our cities in Miami Dade County. Um, the way that the Florida law works is we, as cities, can advertise online once the county takes action and designates an, uh, a website to do these advertisements. So, um, some of you may be familiar with the counties advertising for, uh, if you remember the the foreclosure crisis, that's probably the one that may stick out to you. Um, their website has, uh, all of these advertisements for legal notices. So it's a it's a website called Real Auction is the provider. Well, that's the existing provider. So the county, um, commission has directed, I believe, uh, Mayor Levine Pava to evaluate options for either creating a a website at the county or opting to use a third party service provider. Once the county takes that action, the cities like Miami Springs will be able to utilize the county's website, and so we'll be bringing you an agreement at some point in the future. The that's the expectation, an agreement with the county, some kind of interlocal agreement authorizing us to use their platform for advertising. So, um, for the present, you'll see us continuing to advertise things in the Miami Herald. Um, to the extent we can eliminate some advertising requirements for some that are a bit outdated in the code, so we're going to be looking at that, and this ordinance addresses that for the most part. Um, there there's some outdated things like for procurements having to be advertised in newspapers of general circulation. It doesn't quite, um, work to the city's most efficient interests because we're using Demand Star, and so people aren't like sitting, looking at the Miami Herald to see what to bid on. Um, so this ordinance is a ordinance addresses all of that. Um, but you will see us continuing to have expenses for advertising that may be more than you had previously budgeted for this year. So don't be surprised if you see that going into the next budget. Um, some higher advertising costs, but to the mayor's point from earlier this evening, um, for applications like the one that you heard tonight, where applicants have to advertise the public hearing, those are costs that are incurred by them. Obviously, to the extent that we can keep those costs, um, you know, uh, as low as possible, we'll certainly try to do that. So this also will help us, um, address some of those concerns.
Wonderful. That that hopefully that'll come through soon. Uh, hopefully that'll come through soon, the the county website, because it certainly has been a predicament for municipalities. Thank you, Heidi. Yes, sir.
So this particular ordinance then gives us a little bit of flexibility within the parameters of what's allowed until you know, there are other changes or other options.
Correct.
And and I welcome the flexibility because the reason that print, uh, you know, the the reason that the Herald is charging so much is because print is becoming obsolete and and if it gives us some, uh, some wiggle room and some flexibility to do things, uh, to keep costs down, I I welcome it. So I, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve nine B.
Sucks. Who's seconding it? Oh.
And again, we we do want to address the charter separately, but, um, when you're ready, I know one of the items tonight is to consider a charter amendment. Um, we would encourage you to speak with us about possible options for updating the charter.
Okay. Um, any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so we go to twelve C.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Um, after the last meeting, as we know, we had an issue with solid waste pickup. Um, Tammy and I and Liz, we met with the the manufacturer that we purchased the two trucks from. I'm happy to report that in July, right, July, we'll be receiving the first one, and then the November we'll be receiving the second one. For maybe two or three years ago, there was a backlog of or shortage of chassis. They all came in at the same time, and now there's a backlog in creating the rest of the vehicle. Long story short, Ja- uh, July, and then November is the second one. This, you, as you heard earlier from our auditors, our solid waste fund is also not doing so well. We're going to have to look at, um, adjusting the fees or reducing costs. Right now, having alleyway pickup is extremely labor intensive. That's where that's where your cost is. So a- and on top of that, it's the alleyways are also not paved. So they they take a toll on not only the vehicle and we find ourselves having to fix the vehicles a lot because it it gets beat up when it's going through the alleyway. It also beats up the the employees as well. We've had a a number of workers comp injuries, you know, bouncing and jostling, you know, their backs. Um, and it's happened. I think I think Bill told me, I think, four or five employees that we've that have experienced that. So just talking to you, like giving you an update as far as when the trucks are going to come in, um, and letting you know that coming up in the budget, we're going to have to address that that I'm not going to say deficit, but right now our expenses are exceeding our revenues in that in that enterprise fund, and we're going to have to make the necessary adjustments to bring it up. The auditors have already pointed it out to us, and if we don't, it'll be a finding for sure next year or a letter from the state. So.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
It's probably an expensive proposition. Um, and maybe something to think about long term is 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 paving. Paving those, uh, those alleyways because they do take a wear and tear uh, every week, you know, a couple of times. Um, you know, it's 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 costly proposition, but you know, given the issues we've been having with 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 vehicles, uh, deterioration and impact on personnel, something to maybe consider as a long term.
And the the other thing is, is that these vehicles, in order to fit there, they have they're they have to be small. They're custom built.
Custom built.
So somebody was comparing, I I forgot who it was, one of you were saying, you were were asking me, Miami Shores also has alleyway pickup, and it's true. Alley and Miami Shores has alleyway pickup. They're they're all asphalted.
They're paved.
They're paved, right? And on top of that, if you go down, Miami Shores does not have the ninety six gallon toters. They have a rear loading garbage truck, and their crew comes out just like like in the old days, they just grab the bags and toss toss them in or the the small garbage can, they'll just dump it and put it back, and they just go straight through the alleyways. Um, that's how they collect their trash. They don't have the ninety six gallon toter with the sidearm. So the sidearm takes, they call them the one arm bandits, they they take a little more space. So they require a little little extra width in the alleyway. Ours are custom made. They're made narrow. And so that's another problem that we that we encounter is our options are very limited when something like this happens.
I just want to remind everybody to paved alleys require maintenance of these alleyways.
Yeah.
That, you know, asphalt wears out just as easily as the.
And it's.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I mean, I it it's not a it's not an issue for me because, um, I don't have an alleyway, so I have to, well, I don't, my son does, take out the, uh,
the garbage.
You know, put it on the front. So, you know, front door pickup, maybe another option.
Well, and and that's. That is one of the, you know,
probably least.
With the trucks that we're having, right, is, you know, and I don't think anyone wants to, the majority of, I too have, I don't have an alley, so my garbage gets picked up in the front, but the majority of residents that have alleys, I don't think are, you know, um, I want to give that up. So, um, but thank you, JC, for putting this out, the information, and and it's very timely because the auditor's report is pointing that out that we haven't increased our um, solid waste, um, collection fees in a very long time. Most cities have, you know, done that consistently, and we've tried to keep it down, um, because, you know, like everything else, we tried to keep it down. But, um, we're long overdue, um, to reevaluate that.
It it's. We'll we'll have to look into it further.
Yes.
And.
And unfortunately, it's a sign of, you know, the 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 past few years, everything's increasing in price. Everything's inflation and cost, labor costs, materials costs, um, delays in in even getting things if you want them. So, you know, that's just the the reality of the times that we're going through right now.
Mayor, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
How old do the trucks we have currently?
It's a great question. Um, one of them is called Frankenstein because it's been kept together, right? It's Frankenstein.
Cannibalized.
Is that the one with all the tape?
No, um. Well, over, yeah, ten years. And then.
We have a two thousand and six truck that is still on the road that we're.
That's almost twenty years.
Managing it up. And, um.
And the other one's older than that.
The other ones are fifteen and twenty.
Yeah. Old fleet.
So, Jase, you'll be preparing something to discuss this. I know this is something we've talked about, about evaluating our.
Liz Liz has been working on, um, item, I, you know, really establishing what what our costs are, and then the revenues, so we can, um, just compare it and then and see what we actually need to be charging.
Mm hmm.
Been doing some sampling of some, uh, bulk pickups as well to show an example of what it would cost, what it costs to actually take it to the dump and dump it. And so that's strictly, you know, uh, analysis that she's doing there. So she's doing several different things.
Because we have to pay, residents don't realize, perhaps, they don't realize that it's not just picking it up, the cost of, you know, uh, the manpower and the machine to pick it up. We have to pay to dump it, to take it to a dump and offload it, and it's by pound, ton, I don't know what, but
Correct.
Very costly.
And I've I've worked in a city where it was weekly bulk. That's expensive. I mean, it really is expensive because it's every week.
Right.
And and so when you, a lot of cities space it out, um, you reduce that cost.
Right.
And so.
So just a lot of things that we'll have to be looking at, um. Anything else with that, JC?
That's it for now.
Okay. We'll go to twelve D. Um, I want to state right before the beginning because I know there's going to be misunderstandings or misinterpretations of this. What I'm about to propose in no way impacts me. I am termed out. This is my last term, and I'm termed out. So, um, what I am about to propose is something that, um, I think would benefit the city going forward. And, um, basically, and and I know it's late, so I'll try to make it brief. Um, right now we have two year terms. So every two years, um, every eighteen months, we're preparing to run for election if you're if you're not termed out like I am. Um, and also every, um, two years, we have a new mix in the council, which makes it difficult for it as a council as a whole to work long term on any projects because, you know, every two years it's a new mix and, um, and that's particularly, I think, um, impacts the staff, the city staff, you know, like right now, okay, there's an election coming next year. There, you know, there may be projects that are long term that if they get involved in them, they're not sure exactly the direction they'll get from the new council. So what I'd like to propose is four year terms, still eight years total, which is, um, what's in our charter is, you know, an eight year term, but it would be in essence, two four year terms. And I know there's some, you know, Ruth, right now, with, you know, where we're at right now, so I've even thought that out, and I'll be pretty specific on it. But I think the reason, um, that I'd like to suggest that the council consider, um, that we put this on the ballot for November, it has to be, um, a charter amendment, so the the public, our residents would vote on it. Um, and again, we'd still be serving or a council member or mayor could still serve up to a maximum of eight years. Um, but it would be two year terms. That would give the council four years to work together on projects to, you know, to, um, plan longer term, but it also helps the city staff. You know, it alleviates, um, Erica's time, you know, as preparing for a, uh, a new election every, you know, eighteen months. So it it lets them, gives them a little more assurance of direction that, yes, this is what we're going to do, and this is where we're going to be next year and the next year and and the next year. Um, the issue would be, and what I'd like to put on the ballot, if the council agrees, is, um, going to four year terms, um, still a total of of eight years total served. Um, and that would be starting with this new election in April. Now, there's, in order to incorporate that, obviously, you know, there's some situations right here, and I've thought them out. Um, this is just my my thoughts on it, and I'll be specific because in reality, we need to consider specifics, but, um, and I'll start with councilwoman, uh, council, uh, Vice Mayor Fahet. You, your first term that you served was actually a very short term because you, um, we had a special election and and you replaced someone who had resigned. So in essence, your first term and the way our charter was at the time, uh, was only a few months. I think you were elected in in August and the we had the election in, um, April. So it was less than, uh, even a year. So in your case, um, but that counted as a term. So in your case, um, your next term would be if you run again and you're elected to serve again, you would be serving for four years. So in actuality, you would serve a total of, if you were elected again, you would serve a total of, um, eight years and, I don't know, nine months or something. A little, seven months. Okay. So it's a little more, but we've made with the most recent charter amendment, we talked about if someone um, serves, you know, they they're vacating, their positions vacated and and they're, um, coming in to fill it. Would that be considered a term or not? And we said, you know, if it's less than fifty percent of what the term would be, it would not be considered a term. If it was more than fifty percent of what the term would be, it would be considered a term. With, um, uh, Councilwoman Bravo, you've served two terms?
My second term.
Your second term. So if you decide to run again and you were elected, you would serve four years. So in essence, you would have a eight year term.
Right.
So, um, I think these two are the easiest ones that ultimately you'd still be serving eight years, which is what that I'm not proposing any longer terms than that, except in these special situations right now to play catch up. So with the two new council members that were recently elected, um, you, your next election would be in April. And in that case, um, if you were to run two more terms and be elected those two terms, then the you would be serving a total of twelve years, which is more than, I mean, I'm sorry.
Ten years.
Ten years, excuse me, ten years, which is more than the eight years. But again, it's making adjustments so that eventually we're all in the four on the four year term. And the reason that I'm bringing it up now is in order to, and Erica, you tell us, in order to get this as a ballot on the ballot for November, we have to advise.
The supervisor of election.
Elections by when?
July twenty sixth or twenty ninth. I think so, twenty sixth.
Okay. So we don't have to take a vote on this now. I just, I can bring it up again, you know, give some time to think about it, but I think it really serves the best interest of our community, um, the people that are running, um, you know, that are in elected office also, and also the staff, the. Also, and also the staff, the city staff.
Rucher.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, thank you for bringing this. To discussion, I think it's apropos, um, and it's something that's needed some time. It's it's time has come. Um, and I uh, I put about a couple of things last year during election process related to this. Um, because one of the things that I looked at and I tried to get some numbers was the expenses of our elections. Right? Because we do our elections outside of most election cycles. And and so we have to pay to have the elections take place and so forth. That's just a thought that I had about. Aligning our elections with the uh, the rest of the elections to bring costs down. Um, I agree with you on the four year terms. Um, I think, uh, you know, having done it a couple of times, everyone here, just about. Um, it's it's a short amount of time to get ready and run again and do all the other things that you have to do. I think that when when whenever the system was designed, the thinking might have been. Um, you know, it gives us a short amount of time to get rid of the bums, you know, they they can't be there that long. Um, in in American history, lots of places had annual elections like for a very long time, even in New York City, if you can believe that. But I think a four year term, we've come to understand from the presidential and other and other uh, elections. Is a good amount of time. It doesn't change the total amount of time that one can serve. You know, barring some adjustments.
For this.
Given, given specific provisions, which I agree with. Uh, in the case of of councilman forehead, even though I didn't serve. Full second term. Left about four months before the elections. It 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 that wouldn't have, I don't think in my case would have would have an impact, but I think it's a. It your reasoning for this is significant, which is. To give the members of council some um. Important time to give follow up to things and continuity. Because elections are elections and even though. Um, you know, technically we can, well, you 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 you're limited, rest of us could run again. No one's guaranteed to win. So you still could wind up with new people. And that really depends on who is serving at a particular time, but it allows the city allows the 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 the. Longer term for the for the staff and 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 I know how crazy it is with the, you know, certifying candidates and last minute. You know, people turning in their packets at the last minute and so forth. So. I agree in principle with the idea. I'm glad we're going to be having this conversation. I would certainly be for um. After discussion and and tweaking it and whatever, to put it on the uh, on the ballot and see what the voters say.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for bringing this item up, mayor, and I I do appreciate um, your thoughts about this. Um, you're a great mayor. We have a great staff right now. Um, we're very lucky to have what we have, a lot of good changes here in the city. Um. Of course, I would like to see a four year term, right? Because it would just, in my mind, I would know I would have more time, but. I really think that at the end of the day, and I understand the resources and I understand that, eh, you know. To be honest with you, I think elected people can cause a city a lot more damage and money than an actual election itself sometimes. So that's my personal opinion. But I think that to keep the drive, okay, I'm 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 a true believer that when you're pressed for time and you have a goal and you want to get things done. You have a certain amount of time to work with. And I I I truly believe that if you work hard and your 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 work is noticed, um. You'll serve again, maybe you'll have opponents in, maybe not, but I think I like the fire that the city has has promoted in in that sense. I think that four years can be great. Yes, in essence of finishing long projects, but I mean, look how much we've done in two years and we did this with the mindset of. We're expiring every two years. And I think it creates a sense of urgency that if you have something uh, to bring forward, if there are things or items that. Are are very important for the city to address change, and there are council members up here that want to see those change uh. Quick enough, right? They have two years. I do think now working on the council, how much um. You can actually do to really, really see visions come through. Um. We've done it together here for the last, I mean, we're on our third year, we've done so much. I just, I get a little bit scared because. You're not, you're not always going to have the cream of the crop up here, right? And that's, that's what elections are. But I think when it hits home like to municipality levels, I think you can feel the impacts of those um, of of those types of terms if we don't have. You know, four Marias up here, five Walters or or good, I think we can feel that at home a lot faster. So. I'm a little bit like at ease with it, you know, you understand what I'm saying? So. I'm just, um, I like the fact that we have to be hungry for for serving on council and that every two years, if we have to come up to bat, we will. Because if there's a goal, there's a goal and and I I think that um. Expanding the time to to fulfill a goal, whether it's personal or as a team. Um, it shouldn't be based on how much time you have. I think it's the urgency and the time that we actually put into it. Um, so that's kind of like where I'm at with that. I'm a. I don't know if it's past trauma, but.
Well, and that's why I I'd like you to just to think about it. Um, I, you know, I. We have time, but I wanted to get the thought process out there because, you know, if we're going to put it on the on the ballot and let the residents decide. Um, you know, we need to do it with plenty of time to give Erica the time to do that.
No, I I agree with councilman Bravo, uh. Councilwoman, sorry.
Confused.
Sorry. But uh, I mean, I obviously, in my case, it might be the most affected by this uh, rule, but at the end of days, what's the best for the community? So a four year term is not a bad thing. I just really think it should be stacked, you know, not everybody should go. At the same time to vote and get everybody out of this council. So I think it needs to be some other type of system. Maybe the top two vote getters, they get the four years. Uh, but I don't believe it should be across the board. I'm kind of in that with the councilwoman.
Same.
Bravo.
Same.
That, uh, you know, it just leaves us a little bit, um, let the public have his own checking balances. And every two years, at least it'll allow the public to have a say on someone that maybe is not the right person for this community. Uh, and um. Versus four years and, you know, you're stuck with four years. It's the reason why it was put in place. I just think that all of us at the same time. It's not, it's not the right way.
I I.
And there's systems in place already in other communities that we could.
I will, yes, and that's, and there are some communities actually that have three year terms. Surprisingly enough, they have three year terms. I um, I. Um, do not like staggered terms because one of the things that I like to avoid. Is this constant, not that, you know, we all work together, but we the strategic plan, we've got things that. Take time to do together and a council working together for four years allows us to do that. Work, not every two years having a new change, a new switch. And realistically, you know, there there is a um. Uh, a learning curve, you know, before you. Uh, you come on council and it takes a while, even with the best intentions to, you know, to be productive, to be effective. Um, but also the other two points was that of the impact on the staff, on our residents, that they get to know us. Um, you talk to a lot of residents and they're like, who isn't on council right now? Because we're always switching. It's always like, are they still there? Not there anymore? I I have a lot of. Come across people and they go, oh, they're not on there anymore. And you know, I'm thinking, no, it's been. Because we're switching every two years. So that too allows residents to get to know us, that we get more familiar with the issues. But again, it doesn't impact me. In any way, it impacts. Well, you know, you in the sense of, you know, if you run again and you're elected, obviously it'll impact you, all of you. Um, but think about it, I'll bring it back probably the next meeting or the one after, not any later than in May. Um. And, yes, sir.
Yep. So I mean. I think that cost savings is a significant thing here because it it costs the city a lot to run an election. Uh, and doing it every two years, it just means that it's it's more costly for the city. That's part of the reason why I don't like the idea of the staggered elections, because then you lose. Any cost savings, right? Because then you're still running an election, even if you change the terms. Um, I I do believe that uh, there's efficiency in policymaking. When you have continuity and more time, like I, I understand the idea of the sense of urgency. Uh, but there, for the future of the city, big ideas are important and I think it's. It's almost impossible to tackle big ideas when you have these. Time limits because the the year, you know, you guys know how the year runs. Once the budget process starts and that's all you look at is the budget process, right? And and I feel like. Although we have done a lot, and I I again, I don't feel like it's an indictment of us, but I think that we could have done so much more. I feel like there's a lot more that we could do. Uh, I feel like there were people that came into the council. That were very interested in 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 thinking big picture and 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 thinking about strategic plans and kind of. That big picture thinking, I think, is lost when you get the tunnel vision of, you know, like everything that like. A lot comes on our plate. Uh, things just come up, right? And Sylvia had a plan for the. This is big picture stuff that we're talking about this, uh, what we're doing, what we're trying to do to uh. To activate the Southeast Springs. And we had a schedule and then things just as much as you try to put something on the front burner, guess what? Get that out of the way because there's something new that's put on the front burner. And that that's just part of legislating and it's part of what we have to deal with. And I really think that it costs us for big picture things. When you don't have the continuity and the time to be able to execute. Those big picture things. So on top of the cost savings, and I think for efficiency. I think that it's uh, it's something that we should explore and as is the case with everything. Uh, I always ask, what are other municipalities doing? Right? Because I feel like we get, we get the tunnel vision of like, this is how we've always done it and we shouldn't change it at this point. I think that it's important for us to look at what are other people doing? And not only that, let's look at what we perceive to be. Successful municipalities and how do they do it? And I'd be interested, I know that we don't have that at this moment.
I'm pretty familiar with that. It's the majority is four years. What?
Right.
Four year terms, that what changes is whether their term limits or not.
Right.
A lot of municipalities have the four year terms with no term limits, others have.
Right.
The four year terms with, you know, term limits of two years.
I think I think that that's very telling. To me, that means more, I mean. Again, we all have our opinions that that, you know, like. I hear it and I'm like, oh, that sounds intriguing. And this happens with a lot of things that come before us, right? Some people are like, oh, let's let's follow up on that. Let's, sounds intriguing. Other people like, nah. That doesn't sound like it's kind of like a nonstarter with me. And that, but what weighs a lot with me is. What are most successful municipalities doing it? And. Time again, time and again, when we're doing something that most people are not doing, it's probably that we're we're missing out on on something and we're not. We're not being as efficient as we could be. That is. Uh, and and that's the benefit of having, you know, like, rather than having like a city attorney that works for the city full time. Having a big firm like Wyserota, because they're working with all these municipalities and they can provide us with that perspective of like, hey. This is what we're dealing with over here. We're you you guys. You guys are dealing, there's a lot, we're drinking out of a fire hose, right? And it's good to have that outside perspective of like, this is what other people deal with and this is how they deal with it and this is what they do. Uh, I think that we should always try to leverage comparing ourselves to others to see how we can make things better. Uh, because we are not in this alone. Every other municipality in this county is dealing with very similar things and if. If you're telling me that most people do it a certain way, to me, I feel like I gotta consider. Whether or not that's the right thing to do, if that's, you know, they have their reasons for doing it and it kind of seems to me. Where I where I stand, I feel like if it's cost savings, if it allows us efficiency and policymaking. And the continuity to look at like big picture things so that we're not just like dealing with what's two feet ahead of us. Uh, because of, you know, too much urgency, not to mention like just. The expense and lack of bandwidth that a person has to, a person that's on this council has to devote to running again. Uh, in a shorter amount of time because you're doing it, I just feel like it it takes away. And again, I feel like we've gotten a lot done. I feel like we could be getting so much more done. Uh, that's that's my biggest frustration is always that I feel like we should, we could be, could be and should be doing more. And to me, this sounds like it would allow us to do more and be more efficient. And if uh, most people are doing something similar to what's being proposed, I feel like we need to explore that uh, further.
Through the chair. We can, uh, I mean. We can always, obviously, we know that it would have a positive financial impact, right? That is for sure, but I can't guarantee the quality of what would be serving the city. So while I understand the economic benefit, because that's clear. What's subjective is the quality that's going to be sitting on the council.
Well, remember too, um, that this is just to put it on the ballot.
Yes.
We won't make the ultimate decision. It'll be the resident who would make the decision. It's just a ballot question.
Thank you, mayor.
Heidi, did you have something?
Mayor, just a few quick notes. I I know I had emailed you all uh, with the intent of sending you an analysis, but I. Got it a little later in the day from our colleague who prepared it based on all thirty four municipalities. I will share it with you. Um, you know, once I've had a chance to make sure everything is okay, but just. Big picture, um, I asked her to tell us how many cities in Miami Dade County have four year terms for the council versus two year terms. And there are twenty seven out of thirty four municipalities that have four year terms. Um, and obviously the county has four year terms. There are some cities that have different terms for their mayors. So we did notice some trends that there are some cities that have two year terms for mayors, while the rest of the city council has four year terms. Um, so it looks like twenty municipalities have four year terms for their mayor and. Twelve have two year terms and then there's some that have little odd distinctions. Um, we didn't find any cities within Miami Dade County that have three year terms. Um. I am going to ask her to add, because I think the staggering is interesting and I, we didn't include that in our analysis, but I think it would be. I think it would be helpful to you to know if there's staggering of terms throughout these other cities. Um, and then we just, we, we analyzed the term limits and how many cities have eight year terms. And it looks like twelve have eight year term limits and then some have uh, longer term limits, some have. Uh, no more than nine. And then others have longer term limits for their council members only and some have shorter, longer for their mayor. So. That gets a little um, more complicated, but. Um, we'll share that information with you. Um, there are cities I I hadn't. It had been a long time since I had looked at the Kibis game charter, actually, and they implemented staggered terms. Um, when they went from two year to four year terms in, I believe, two thousand and six, when I looked earlier today. So. Um, there are ways to implement the varying ideas, um, whether it's, I I was jotting down the different uh, perspectives. I know. Councilman Vasco has mentioned, you know, aligning with. The November elections is what you you were saying. And then some of you brought up staggered terms and I know mayor, the focus of your. Um, discussion item tonight is simply four year terms. Um. So my only ask, uh, in conjunction with the clerk, I'm gonna pull you in on this is. Even though we have until July to submit to the Miami Dade County Supervisor of Elections. We do need to bring you a resolution that not only has the ballot title in question, which can be. A fifteen word title and a seventy five word question that would go to your electorate. We also have to do the strike through an underline of the charter with whatever you propose. So, um. I will not.
Said, let's just plan for the next council meeting.
Okay.
That I think that's plenty of time for everyone to decide and all we're doing is voting. I mean, deciding whether to put it, ask you to put it on a ballot, right?
That's fine.
For November.
So Roger, Roger will be covering the next meeting, so he'll report back with. Whatever the direction is and then we can come back at either the second May meeting or the first June meeting or, you know, within that timeframe with that proposed resolution.
All right, thank you all.
Yes, sir.
Just two two comments. Uh, one is.
Just two, two comments. Uh, one is, um, I found it interesting that in a dozen cities or so, the mayor has a two-year term and the council has four-year term. And I, I kind of, I just, it was
Well, and there-
I knew there was a joke in there somewhere.
No, and there's-
I wonder if that's a function of whether it's a strong mayor system or a weak-
Yeah, yeah, or exactly.
And you know, I've found, I've heard from so many different cities throughout Florida, but some of them also have rotating mayor. So
Yes.
The mayor is for two years and then the council are the coun- I mean, it's funny, I've found out so much from different cities. But in general, the majority is four-year terms. The difference is whether it's, you know, uh, term limited or not, you know, just varies.
Not, not to make light of it, I just thought that the joke might be, don't worry about it, we'll get rid of the mayor in the next election.
And to be honest, for me personally, the two-year terms, I've preferred because it's easier for me to make a commitment for two years
Correct.
than for four. You know, I've always felt so as, but in looking at the big picture, um, I, I feel strongly that it just, um, we, we have a lot of projects. We have a lot of work to do and working, you know, together, um, for four years for a council, but also the, the impact on the staff, you know, alleviating a lot of, uh, even now, I know Councilman, uh, Fahet, Vice Mayor Fahet, not that long ago, you were saying, well, we're talking about this with, I think, thirty-sixth year, I don't remember, but we don't know next year when we get a different council, you know, what direction they'll want. And, and so we're directing staff to do things, but they themselves have to be thinking, maybe we shouldn't take too much because, you know, we may get a whole new direction in the next few months or, um, and that's the reality of it. So again, um-
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I had a second point. I just wanted to, and, and this was, you know, it's, it's a little bit far out there, but, uh, you know, when, when Heidi mentioned that I had mentioned lining up our elections with the county, um, my thought was that the county would carry the, the elections as opposed to us. So that would be another complication though in terms of lining up with that. But that was my thinking about that. I was looking at it
And, and I'll-
to make it cost-
And just because I, you know, we'll all be thinking about these for the next, um, meeting. But I know, um, you know, some thought has gone into, or at least I've thought about it, about whether our election should be not in April and in, um, November. And from what I've found in talking to other elected officials throughout the state is when you align your election with a presidential election, it becomes so partisan. And one of the best things that I think we have for our city, and it's not the case in all other cities by any means, but definitely for our city, we truly vote based on the issues. It never has to do along party lines. And when you, when your election is, you know, the same time as a presidential election, you can bet your bottom dollar. It becomes very partisan and it's, you know, what party are you? And, and by the time you get elected, that, that remains, that some, you know, feeling. So, um, have, also you don't have as much time for residents to get attention to the city issues because they're concerned with the presidential election, you know? And when we have it in April by ourselves, um, you know, there's a lot of focus on, on local issues and, and on our local candidates and stuff, so.
But by the same token, Mayor, we get, we get greater numbers turnout in the city in presidential elections and midterm elections than we get in local elections. So just, you know, those are, you know, the pros and cons of, of those things. But I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's the biggest complaint that we hear from, you know, former council people and politicians and city administration is that not enough people go to work, go to vote. So you can't have it both ways, you know? Like if, uh, is, November does guarantee that.
I, I would say that it's, even though these are all nonpartisan positions, you're, it's unavoidable that it's going to, that partisanship is going to enter into it because I think it's just the, the, you know, the culture that's, that surrounds us these days. Um, and, but I, I do know that the numbers, the, the voter numbers are suppressed in April. Um, and, uh, more people turn out at the November elections and then, you know, down ballot, if there's a measure, you know, I mean, or things aren't partisan in terms of anything that they would be. Uh, I mean, it's still an, a nonpartisan race. Uh, so even though it may be during a more partisan election because it's, uh, it's in November along with, you know, national politics on down, I still feel like the more people that are going to pick up the ballot that could help to decide what happens, the better for us.
Well, we'll, uh, just think it out and we'll, um, come to a decision in, in two weeks. Um, okay. Thank you so much for considering this. And again, I'm just throwing it out there. It's, um, I, I, I think it can be, um, maybe a beneficial thing for our community. So let's go to the city attorney reports.
Um, just two quick things. Um, Councilman Centine, you had requested, um, some additional information on the parking. And we had shared that we were going to bring back as to whether we need an ordinance or not. So Roger and I have looked at the existing, uh, code. Our recommendation is going to be that you do adopt an ordinance. That's not to say that you should not go ahead with your plans. Please proceed. I know that you're going to have an educational period and things like that. Um, so do not put the brakes on that. Go forth and conquer. But we will bring back an ordinance just to, um, update the code. The current provisions only really talk about your parkways, um, Curtis, Westward, um, Morningside. So your parking program is going to extend well beyond those streets. So we want to make sure that you have the authority to do everything that you're carrying up to do. So, um, that's on that. And on the Form Six litigation, um, our partner Jamie Cole gave us an update today. Um, there was a hearing on the federal case. As you know, there's two cases. There's a state case and a federal case. And there was a hearing this morning from ten AM to one forty-five in federal court. And apparently it went well. Uh, the judge heard a lot of our arguments about the change from Form, to Form Six from Form One being compelled speech. So there were some First Amendment arguments that were made. Um, so it seems like she's inclined to grant the motion for the injunction. But she is going to give the defendant some time to provide some additional arguments. So it looks like we'll have, um, some additional arguments between now and next Wednesday. And then we'll be waiting on the judge's order. So as soon as we have that information available, we will certainly be sure to share it with you. Um, and obviously whether the injunction is going to be statewide or only for the, uh, plaintiffs that were named in the lawsuit, uh, that is completely up to the judge. So we'll, we'll wait for her decision.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, two things. The first one is I'm working on, as you know, working on the joint use agreement for the outdoor basketball courts at Miami Springs Senior High School. Um, last week, um, school board member, uh, Dan Espino popped his head into my office and, and he told me that, um, he's aiming for May to have that before us so we can approve it. Um, and then it, then it goes back to the school board for them to approve. So May is what we're shooting for. Uh, and then the second thing is you're probably wondering who the new face is in, in, in the audience.
Oh, who stayed late.
You're wondering, okay, um, that is Kevin Morris. And he, as of April twenty-ninth, will be our new golf director.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
And so, um, his experience, coupled when, with when I interviewed him, um, his, his vision is in line with what I envisioned for, for the golf course. And I think in, in speaking to you all, I think it's in line with, with your, your vision for the golf course. And, and then to, to put the cherry on top, he's a great fit, I believe, in, in the organization on top of the fact that he is a resident. So, I, I mean, total package. I'm very excited and I can't wait to start, uh, for him to start. And, um, I'm just lucky that he doesn't submit his resignation after this meeting.
Welcome. We're so glad that, to have you. Look forward to to having you, um, seeing your face over at the golf course. All right. Anything else?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Tammy?
Yes, um, we have, uh, April twenty-seventh from six to ten, uh, PM. We have at the Curtis Mansion, the historical, um, museum is sponsoring the dinner gala. Um, also, um, as you all know, sorry. Shannon has been working very hard at, um, adding, I'm sure you guys saw the, the Pilot House, uh, and what a great job she did with that. Um, so we're still calling all, uh, Springs Restaurant and Business Owners to reach out to her. And they can be, she can, they can be reaching out to her by, uh, public information at miamysprings-fl.gov. Um, so that she will do a free advertisement video for, um, restaurants and businesses. So we're just continuing that. That's all I have for right now, Mike.
Mayor, if I, if I just may add, I do want to acknowledge Public Works or Parks and Rec, Police, Shannon, um, for, um, for their work in the, at the River Cities Festival. Um, it, it turned out great and I, and I commend Julie for, for a great job. But as far as getting the city ready and making sure the city recuperated quickly. Um, and, and as you know, it was kind of messy, uh, right, shortly right after. Um, I, I do want to commend our staff. They, they just did a, an incredible job. And, and again, as, as Tammy mentioned, this, this, um, campaign that, that Shannon started for the, um, to promote the, the local businesses, um, everybody is talking about it and I, I think it's going to be quite successful. So I'm looking forward to it.
Did a top-notch on, really nice. Okay, um, Vice Mayor?
Sure. Um, yeah, the River Cities was great. Uh, kudos to the people on the River Cities, uh, Committee, uh, for putting on a great event. Uh, I'd like to say that this last Saturday at Factory Town was their Blazit event from three-thirty in the afternoon until two in the morning because it was four-twenty. Um, and I, on the, the, this is the most easterly, uh, resident on the council, didn't hear anything. My understanding is that we didn't receive no-
I didn't receive anything and I didn't even realize it was an event on, on that day.
I mean, I, I kept it in the back of my mind because, uh, because Heidi had told us that we would see what happened when their next set of events were going to happen. And that was on Saturday. Yeah, I didn't see any emails from residents. I didn't hear anything. I don't think anything came into the police station. Uh, and, and I bring that up because, you know, when, when people are understandably upset because they're being kept up by the noise, the emails are kind of say like, when are you guys going to do something about it? And I, I think that we had, uh, thanks to the efforts of our city attorney in the past. And then they kind of had, like, they kind of fell off the wagon here for a second. But I think that it speaks to the fact that our, our processes were in place that after that bad weekend, they knew that they were under the microscope if it happened again. And it seems like this last weekend, they kept it under control and it didn't happen again. So I, I just think that's a success, uh, and kudos to, uh, staff for, for helping make that happen. So we don't have to have any sleepless nights, uh, during this last event.
Thank you. No, you're right. Councilman Centine.
Um, also want to thank Julie and the staff for this River City Festival was great. Obviously, the weather cooperated. It's understatement. Beautiful weather for the whole weekend, but, um, people underestimate how difficult it is and hear a lot of chatter out there about, uh, you know, volunteer committees doing this and so forth. And, uh, watch what you wish for. This is very difficult. Uh, and it takes months and months of preparation. So, uh, kudos to, uh, Julie and the staff. Yes, can we get better? Of course. That's the whole point. We all up here because we feel like this town could always get better. So to say that that's it, this is all the end product, it's ridiculous. Um, so kudos to them. And then, um, in reference to the two presentations we had today with the, uh, with the, uh, Tennis Center, uh, thank you, I thanked them for presenting their case. Um, Brad, as much as he's, uh, he's one of the community guys that you kind of want to have in our community because that's what, what makes it so special. Uh, you know, obviously I had my concerns and staffing and so forth, but, um, this new company on paper, they look great. And we're going to have to put their feet to the fire to make sure that's exactly how they, how they react and they act. So, thank you.
Okey-dokey. So, um, I hope the whole community had a great time at the River Cities Festival. I was not able to go only during opening because I had other engagements to attend to. I tried to go some night, but then for some reason and the other than my, you know, my kids have a better social life than I do, so I'm like Uber. Um, so that's that. I want to welcome, uh, Valiente Tennis Pro Match, is that what they're called? I'm really looking forward to a fresh start with our courts. I want to see our assets come to life. I want to see, I'm going to sign up tomorrow, whenever you're ready. Because I need to get more into, I mean, I do my workouts and stuff and I do yoga, but I, I need to get out there. I want to, I want to engage with the community. I, I don't do that too much, but if I'm going to engage with my community, I'd rather be out there doing something with them or it will cultivate some, some raw, uh, relationships. Um, I like how this meeting went today. Welcome, Kevin Morris. I'm so excited. And, um, I was looking, I was like, oh, this is a new face here. I haven't seen that face. But, um, we'll definitely get together, um, at one point to, to exchange, uh, words. And, um, uh, what else? I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor, for conducting such a great meeting. Thank you to staff. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Councilman Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, uh, Councilman Fahet had mentioned a couple of times, you know, the point about, um, being able to think big, right? And even if you don't get there, you know, others will. And so, uh, first of all, I'm, I'm delighted with Sylvia and her group and her presentation. I love Southeast Miami Springs. That's going to be my term from now on. And the idea of, you know, the potential there. In fact, during the discussion about elections, I'm thinking, um, you know, is that going to be eventually a precinct out there, you know, for a lasting purpose? Something to think about, right? You know, you never know. But, uh, that's all good. That's all good to think about. Um, um, I was asked and I'm honored to serve as, again, as the emcee for a Memorial Day celebration. So, um, I'm honored to do that and, um, and we definitely have to address, and we did address the memorial, the committee had a table at the festival and I was there for a few hours despite my allergies. Uh, you know, talking to people and letting people know who had already ordered the bricks that they're here. Thanks to Public Works, thanks to the city manager. Um, and I had a chance to talk to Senator Avila at the opening, uh, session and, uh, told him a little bit about what happened with the proposal. And, uh, he was surprised that, but he said he wanted to help and probably get a little bit more money to help us with that. Uh, he's also working on a, on, on getting some funding for the World, World War One Memorial. That's going to be, you know, with, with an airplane and so forth. So I think we got some really interesting stuff coming always. Uh, and it's an honor for me to serve, to be honest. Uh, I know some days are recently and I'm still, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm working on some health issues. It's been a long drive. I know sometimes up here, some of you may have gotten the impression that I was out of it a little bit. And I actually was, you know, but I was pushing along and, and I thank my colleague Walter when he goes in. And so what do you think? Uh, anyway, um, rolling right along. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I'm just going to say goodnight because we're at eleven and if we go past eleven, we have to vote to extend the meeting. So, uh, with that, we're adjourning the meeting.